Okay, so we are here today to bring you the trifecta from the Office of Facilities and Transportation around our CIP enrollment, looking at the CIP and then look enrollment trends, looking at the CIP, and also looking at our renewable energy. We're going to start with enrollment trends, and so I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Gillis and Mr. Sneed and Mr. Plattenberg.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. We're going to try and be as explicit and efficient in the interest of your time. As you know, the school board had the presentation where we have both the enrollment trends and the capital improvement program. And in fact, we have those two items here listed today, but as we had briefed at the previous school board meeting, we're going to go ahead, and they are inextricably linked. The board members have requested a desire in the future for us to bifurcate, to separate, and come back with the enrollment trends prior to the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, in the future, as the enrollment trends inform and also allow the opportunity for a lot of the questions that came up at the CIP public meeting that we had. So with that, Jessica, if you wouldn't mind going through some of those trends, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Briefly, the first part of this presentation is the difference between the student membership from school year 1718 and school year 1819. Sorry. Is that better? Okay. So FCPS overall decreased by about 1,000 students. In the primary portion, we saw a decrease was at elementary school. We had 941 students, fewer that enrolled in FCPS this year at an elementary level than we had last year. We also saw a large decrease in our centers or now alternative programs. One of the primary factors there is the change between ESAL Transitional High Schools and the Fairfax County Adult High School Program. Our birth to kindergarten ratio remained at 85%, and our total number of births and the birth rate has been on the decline, and that's for FCPS as well as state of Virginia and nationwide. Transfers are the number of students that are transferring within the Fairfax County Public School Division as a total, and last this 1819 year was 19,887 students, which is about 11,000 or 11% of our total enrollment.
Is that slide page three?
Sorry. Okay. It's really touchy. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so our, for our transfer reasons, we have 28% of the transfers are for advanced academic, 21% for special education, and 18% for student transfer regulation. For migration, net migration is the difference between students who withdrew in school year 1718 versus the students enrolled in 1819. Net migration decreased from 1,253 students last year to minus 357 students this year. This was our first decrease since, I think, about 2005, 2006 full year. So we had a difference of plus or minus 5% for all the in and out migrations for each race or ethnicity. At the high school level, we had an Asian in-migration of 17% and an out-migration of 8%. For our Hispanic students, we had an in-migration of 31% and an out-migration of 47.5%. Also, at the high school level, we had 814 students that were classified as a dropout. This next page shows net migration by grade level, and it's a comparison with blue is the SY school year 1718 and yellow this year. So you can see there's been a lot of differences, especially if you look at below the line is the students who have left, and we added a negative, and above the line is a positive. So you see a 10th grade, 8th grade, 7th grade, 6th grade, and so on. For our five-year projection, we had an overall, we have, are showing an overall contracted growth. So we're still increasing, but at a decreasing rate. Housing growth is based on development already approved and in the pipeline, such as rezonings, site plan, things that are under construction. And housing growth, we know, will remain high, but be primarily multifamily, which has typically yielded smaller number of students. Demographic shifts are a driver, particularly the declining birth rates. Elementary membership projected to decline, and our future growth is expected at the middle and high school levels as our larger cohorts continue to move up through our school system. Capacity pressure is expected in more middle and high schools. Our membership growth is expected to occur in areas where students, where schools may not have surplus capacity. And with that, I'm going to push it over into our capital project, capital program portion of the CIP.
Okay. In the capital portion, you can go ahead and switch it to. The capital improvement plan and the CIP portion, again, in the CIP, we take a look at an annual review of a five-year projection. The reason why we do that is because enrollment trends and data trends that Ms. Gillis just went through, and the impacts of some of those elements that change that does occur, do impact where we're going to go on the capital improvement program. So, excuse me, they're putting it up now. Yeah. So the reason why those trends impact or influence the capital improvement program are where we have different programming, different shifts that are happening across the county, and different data elements that therefore sometimes impact our capital or facility needs. And in this part of this discussion that Mr. Sneed is going to begin in just a moment to do, we talk about where those needs are and where the individual capital improvement program or capital facilities needs are going to be within the school system. What then happens after that component of it is that we then provide that information to the general county that they include in the broader county-wide capital improvement program. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Sneed, if you don't mind, to go through the actual facility and the finance. And we look at what our short-term needs are, what our funding that we do have, and then what our long-term needs and what the funding that we're going to need.
So this year, we received an increase of $25 million. Now, we, our current capital funding is $180 million a year. So as Jeff said, our funding sources are broken up. We also have operating funds associated with our construction fund. We have minor capacity enhancements. These are, sometimes we refer to this as the overcrowding fund, as well as routine major maintenance, $6.4 million. In addition, we receive funding from the Board of Supervisors from their year-end funds. This replaced money that used to be contained in the bond, which was major maintenance. There's roofing, HVAC, ADA, work, asphalt paving, things of that nature. So in 2014, we began to receive that money, and that typically comes in in July of each year. Okay. Okay, so let's talk about our new construction, Northwest County Elementary School. We just bid this. This is a school intended to relieve overcrowding at McNair Elementary. As we've discussed in the past, there wasn't any available land in that area, nor was it affordable. I think the important thing to note about Northwest County is this is our first wraparound services community school. I don't know how many of you all were aware of that. But we have, this school was designed specifically to include, it was designed to allow maximized community use. So we have a three-story classroom wing, which is, even though it's attached to the building, the common areas are in a separate area. In addition, it was built and designed to fit on a smaller footprint. So as we said, we have a 10-acre site. We already had 98,000 square foot elementary school. In this particular case, we're building another elementary school, and it still has a full field. So it's designed to fit on smaller sites. Has a community service delivery room. We moved the clinic outside of the main office so people could receive services off hours. We also included 3,000 square foot rec center that has a separate entrance. So this is, as I said, this is the first school that we've been able to include these. In addition, currently, we have, in the planning stage, we're going to side-adapt the same building that we used at McNair. It's called Fairfax Oakton Elementary. We started the planning. We did collaborate with the Board of Supervisors, and they dedicated Lake Lane Park to, for the school site. You'll notice there are some newer schools here. One is called Silverline Elementary. This sits kind of at the crux of three of the magisterial districts, Drainsville, Otter Mill, and Sully. If you contemplate what we're doing here, we have, as we said, we're already building Northwest County. Just north, Coates Elementary is in this area, and Hutchison. Hutchison has over 1,000 students. We have nearly 1,400 at McNair, and Coates has 835. We're anticipating, and they've already started construct, 10,000 townhomes and two over two apartments in this area. I see somebody who used to be on the planning commission is familiar with that. This will most likely result in a minimum of 2,000 new students to the schools, probably upwards of 3,000. We need, Supervisor Faust was very, very helpful. He did obtain one site for at least one elementary school, as well as some additional proper funding per unit, but it pales in comparison to what we're actually going to need there. By our estimates, these students will generate the requirement for 2,000 student elementary schools, at least half a middle and half of a high school in an area that's already congested. I just want everybody to understand, these are already breaking ground as we speak. You notice that we also list the future Western High School. I think as long as I've talked about this, we've been pretty clear, we don't own any big parcels of land. Our experience in looking for the Silverline site, they asked for $2.5 million an acre. There would be, I cannot foresee at any point in time which our capital funding would support us buying large parcels of land. I mean, you know, at $2.5 million, you know, 18 months ago, I mean, just to buy a 30 or 40-acre site would wipe out the capital program. It'd be $100 million single expense. So what this tells us is we're going to have to use what we have. So I just wanted to put that out there. Right now, and we'll talk a little bit in the CIP, we do show our 10-year expenditures, and that high school would certainly pull parts of Westfield, which is, runs all the way up to the toll road, but we have other boundaries that come into play in association with that. It touches the Herndon Boundary, the South Lakes Boundary, Oakton Boundary. So I don't know if you, we anticipate that this will be on the 2025 bond for planning, and most likely the '27 or '29 for construction. You know, and again, I don't think we've been shy about this. We think that when this school eventually is built, that it will have wide-ranging ramifications across the county, stretching clearly from inside the Beltway all the way to the western edge as these boundaries are intermixed. So if you guys aren't on the board, your future replacements will have a lot of fun with that. In addition, we anticipate building other new schools, something we've talked about down on Route 1. We anticipate having to construct a new school within Tysons. We have a site there. We also expect to reopen existing centers, most namely Dunn-Loring, Piment, and Virginia Hills. Again, with the shortage of affordable or available land, we're going to have to reuse sites that we own. It's a significant amount of money, and this is, I think, the only way that we can move ahead with that. So we have, we have a couple modular projects which are funded. One is Bushill. The other that we're anticipating in the near future is a modular at Kilmer Middle, which has 14 or 15 trailers. We like to remove those. This bond, we do have funding for another modular relocation, in addition, at West Potomac, Justice, and Madison High School. And those are all, all three of those are in planning, and my expectation is that their funding will be in the 2019 bond. Let's talk about the amount of funding that we have. So currently, we have $329.9 million in funding. Almost the vast majority of those have been allocated to projects. We have two more projects from the 2017 bond to bid, the last being Hughes Middle School in March. But you can see, as these projects that we're discussing come up, we're still 240, or $642.6 million short. And over a 10-year period of time, our unfunded requirements are approximately $1.8 billion. We've been very successful with our bond referendum, so I expect that that will continue. And we've got, as you can see, there's a significant amount of work underway. Some of these projects are nearing completion, but there's 10 elementary projects currently under construction, six in the planning phase. We also, as I said, Hughes bids in a month, so we have Rocky Run and Hughes will be under construction in this fiscal year. And the next bond contains construction, both Cooper Middle School and Frost. We have West Springfield, Herndon, and Oakton under construction. And I mentioned the three additions, and Falls Church High School, which is currently in the planning stage, will bid right after the 2021 bond, almost immediately at that point. These are some of the projects that we recently completed. Newington, Forest, Cherry Ron, Stratford, Landin, Forestville, Langley. They look pretty nice, so if you have a chance to stop by, that would be great. We'll do this. Oh. All right. All right, there is some new information and within the CIP and improved structure and content. I think one of the most significant ones, if you recall, and you can see the images here, is we used to have the current capacity status on one page, and then, you know, a couple pages later, we would give you the five-year look. But here, those are side by side, so it makes it quite a bit easier to understand that. We also, the solutions are summarized in a single table for each region, so it makes it easier to locate those. And this is something we've been trying to do for a while. We just hired a coordinator for sustainability, and he put this together. He's working with information from both facilities management and design and construction. We're obviously going to expand this, but it's an environmental sustainability report within the CIP.
So that really concludes our form prospect. As you know, we began with the new business that we had, of course, on Thursday, December 20th of last year. I also had a public hearing on January 8th, and then, of course, today is work session on January 14th with the upcoming opportunity for action on January 24th. So there has been a process associated with this conversation, and we're certainly ready to answer any questions or incorporate any recommended adjustments to the CIP at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, and I forgot to say this is Mr. Sneed's last work session.
Oh. He appreciated that.
25 days? 28th of February. Sorry, 28th of February.
Oh, we could have an extraordinary work session for Mr. Sneed.
We could be on time, yes. I think, well, thank you very much. I have on my list, Ms. Strauss's number is first, and I'm hoping we can get some more.
Thank you. First, if we could put up, it's page 65, the map. You can find that it's in the actual report. It's a capacity. And I can explain, it's map six, page 65 in the report, in the CIP. Okay? All right. While you're pulling that up, I intend to offer an amendment to the CIP to call for a limited boundary study that would result in community and facilities planning to move some of the Longfellow-McLean Attendance Area into the Cooper-Langley Attendance Area when we get the map and see what I'm talking about. The boundary study would primarily focus on the north end of the Tysons area, where we have some older apartment buildings, older apartment buildings. This is not the new, high-rise, very expensive places. These are older, family-friendly, family-affordable apartment buildings that... Okay, that's still not yet. Yeah, no, it's not middle school. I want high school. It's 65 is going to show the best. Okay? The issue is, and I think if we can show, because I think you all know the area that I'm talking about on the map, it is the north side of Tysons. Those who know, these are, this is a rotunda, this is the Lincoln. Family-friendly, modest-income areas. If I, yes, that's right. And these, the McLean High School is overcrowded now, and it is projected to be more so over time as a result of the continued growth in the Tysons area, which is planned. And if you look at Langley's capacity, they are under-enrolled now, and the under-enrollment will continue, so there is plenty of room. This will, if we don't go ahead and do this, it means more trailers, possibly a modular at McLean High School. And if our goal is to reduce our reliance on trailers and modulators, and certainly to make the best use of money, bond money that we have already spent, this particular boundary change, I think, is a good use of space, of money. The children, the students who currently live in this little section at Tysons, their elementary is currently Spring Hill, which is the Langley High School feeder. And I wouldn't, I would not anticipate that the change would actually take place until probably the school year 2020, because there has to be time, obviously, for people to talk about this and consider it. There are other areas along Route 7 that are currently at McLean that at some point may be ripe for discussion to move into the other pyramid. I am not sure that now is the right time for that, and certainly this, doing this particular limited boundary change does not preclude further future boundary changes, because certainly along the Silverline, Route 7, and what is, has already been approved that will impact the new high school, and I will be upfront, because I have warned the Langley High School Attendance Area people, that when and if the high school in the Western County is built, I would anticipate that that will also have an impact on the Langley boundaries. So I am talking about a limited scope, and this particular boundary change would probably make sense forever with, when you take into consideration what is planned for Tysons and what is happening at Tysons. This would also provide an opportunity for the Langley Attendance Area to welcome apartments, and these are affordable apartments. So, and at the moment, with the declining enrollment at both Langley and at Cooper, staffing is becoming a challenge, and it's not a good use of operating money if you are having to overstaff because of a declining enrollment in order to meet the curriculum needs of the students. So for all those purposes, I intend to offer that amendment. I also would like to suggest in possible solutions for the McLean Pyramid Elementary Schools, just to add as a possibility, adding a classroom addition at Franklin Sherman. This, no timetable, no plans, other than to add it in the A through H, possible solutions over time for resolving the overcrowding. So my proposal. Thank you.
All right. Just to remind everyone, that was close to five minutes, so I appreciate.
Sorry, but I needed to get that out.
That's okay. We're already behind in time, so next we have Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Thank you. I actually was not planning on addressing the boundary issue, but I would suggest that before we talk about individual boundaries, we do have scheduled as a school board to look at the goals of our boundaries, and we have been very deliberate in trying to make sure that we have that more holistic conversation, and I believe it's scheduled for the end of February, beginning of March. Now, for the specifics of the CIP, that's in the CIP, I do have some questions. Page 14, when we talk about the migration out of Mount Vernon High School, one of the things I would urge is that we look at, or we include in there, that there was a significant migration out of Mount Vernon High School, and it may have been in the, in the actual trends analysis, but the migration was facilitated by a, an action by our state assembly, our state-level government, when they allowed for pupil placement for anybody that wanted to out of a military base. And so there was a substantial number of students who moved out of there, and I think that we have to be honest in our description of that. Additionally, on 119 TJ students are in our system but are not from Fairfax County or from Fairfax City. Can you confirm that we are fully reimbursed for the cost of educating those students at TJ? Additionally, page 24, you have the transfer out does not include non-county transfers, but the transfer in does include county transfer, or non-county transfers. Why don't we, you know, I'm an old accounting buff, and you usually had to have the gazentas and the gazaltas measure up, and so looking for why we don't do that there. Page 62, on 37% of the transfers in middle school are due to AAP. Question is, what would be the impact if you actually had AAP at each of our middle schools? Because that's higher than the other. Page 154, you talk about having not done a facilities condition assessment since 2008. Why not, and how long would Phase 1 take? Additionally, deferred maintenance line item in the budget, what should it be? And exactly how should we realize that? Last, on renewable energy, what is the cost per mile of our buses being, transiting past other high schools or middle schools to get for our boundaries? And how much could we realize every year on that? And then the last, but not least, I would love to see as part of our CIP a very targeted goal. And then the last but not least, I would love to see as part of our CIP, a very targeted goal, which says that when we do a renovation, we should be looking at renewable energy for that building. And if we don't integrate renewable energy into our building modifications, we need to have an explicit reason why. Did I get it in three minutes? I think I went over.
Three oh six, you're good. Okay. Did staff want to comment on any of that?
No, we'll follow up.
Okay.
I mean, some of the questions that were mentioned about the, I'll let Mr. Sneed talk about the renovation. Looking at transportation is a great idea, but our transportation is very efficient in terms of the diesel that we do use for our buses and the conditioning of it, but we will follow up with that, so it's codified, because there is an element of that that does come into play. Some of the other cost elements, we'll definitely break out. As far as the sustainability components, one of the... As far as the sustainability elements, every, anytime we go through renovation, we do take a look at anything that's possible that we could possibly do. We follow the Consortium for Environmental Schools, and we can talk more about that at our renewable fund. But it really is one-third of all our renovation dollars go into sustainable initiatives. And I think with our, with our public purchase agreement that we're in with the county, we'll be able to take a look at it and have that be a component of any of our renovations to see where applicable.
As well as the impact of the change in policy at the state level for pupil placements and cost recovery for people from outside of the county? And middle school AAP, what would be the impact on our building capacity if we changed that?
The one, one question that you asked, you talked about the building assessment, that was the cue, okay? It's in the report, it's in the CIP, but by my estimation, we're going to need to develop a new renovation queue by 2023, because we're going to run out of schools in the queue by the end of the decade. So you're going to want to have those schools in, in order and allow the designing construction staff to begin to insert those into the cash flow.
So the condition analysis wouldn't address also major maintenance that needs to be done?
Well, could, but mostly, these are schools that we've identified that are next to be renovated. So there's two separate ones. Now, when we do the assessment of the schools and the queue, that is part of, that is part of the assessment of the building, to decide, you know, to help decide where, what order it should be renovated in.
So I would urge that on the major maintenance piece, because it's an area that we haven't had sufficient revenue streams for, that it would help us in the budget season to understand what that major maintenance component should be. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Mr. Moon.
Thank you, thank you. I sent in a lot of questions yesterday, so I'm not going to ask all of those, because some of those, you know, some of those questions have been already asked by some of the colleagues of mine. As to the trailers, as a part of the resource stewardship discussion, there was, including the next steps, was what I did send in yesterday. So I didn't want to speak at the time, because I wanted Mr. Sneed, before you retired, at the end of February, to hear from me one more time, that, that I would like to have, I would like to have a list, because I assume that the staff is going to propose ten-year plan for eliminating all the trailers. And if the board adopts that, I want to know what they would look like year by year, listing all the scores, how which schools and number of trailers going to be eliminated by what time? So that I expect to have a discussion with the county board of supervisors. Is that, Madam Chair, do you remember when that is going to take place? Joint meeting with board of supervisors on capital facility? Is that, has that been scheduled or testing the works?
I'm going to have to come back to you on the exact date, I don't have it readily available.
Okay. Because I would like to have all that information and also prior, even prior to meeting, show the information with the supervisors, so that they don't come back and say that I have not really had a chance to review this and I have no response from you, and then just kick the can down the road.
Mr. Moon, it's February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth. That's before you retire, Mr. Sneed. So...
You can always move it up.
He can always move it up.
It's our timeline. I know we are scheduled to vote on CIP at the next school with a meeting, twenty-fourth of January. Is that the drop dead deadline? How much, how much of a reg room do we have? Just in case there is a huge snow and then we need to cancel the school with a meeting.
I mean, you're anticipating the county would give us extra funding in the upcoming fiscal year dedicated to the removal of temporary classrooms?
No, I'm talking about CIP, action on CIP, because that has to be sent over to a county side to be incorporated to county's CIP. What is our deadline?
We already had to send over a mock of what is in here, and any changes that we make, we, we would have to do it quickly, although...
You're not answering my question. You're taking my time.
I'm trying to make sure that I answer the, I'm trying to answer the question. So if, we know, we've already provided data for what it would cost to replace all the trailers and the modular additions. We've done that numerous times. So that number was around three hundred and twenty-three million, regardless if we...
Okay, Mr. Plattenberg.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the essence of time, I think we have a week after the...
Week after that.
But I will verify with Lee Burden and get that answer back.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Now, you know, looking at slide number six, board of supervisors, supervisors could argue that they have given us twenty-five million dollars additional capital funding. This is your second year of additional funding, correct?
We're in the, yeah, next, yeah, this, this adopted one would be the second year, that's correct.
So, right now, this school year is the first year of twenty-five million dollars, okay? And then, a few years ago, they gave us fifteen point six million, decided to give us fifteen point six as part of their year-end, I mean, there's a condition, they have to have year-end surplus, fifteen point six, they were going to give us to be used for infrastructure management, so that we could basically, what we were reasonably using long ago for infrastructure management, to be used for capital funding needs, correct?
Correct. It's thirteen point two, but it's up to fifteen point six.
Yeah, so they could argue that they have already given us about forty million dollars of extra money.
Correct, thirty-eight, yeah.
Thirty-eight.
I guess forty, right.
About, about forty, they could just anticipate what they may say. But our CIP is still, if you look at the five-year needs and also ten-year needs, that one hundred eighty million, one hundred eighty million dollar cap does not meet the needs.
That's correct.
You're, you're, you are correct. I did not, you know, as long as I've been, I became director in two thousand and six, which is a year after we, in theory, went to a hundred and fifty-five million. And they maintained that level for sixteen years. So looking at the simple CPI, the value of that money was almost forty million dollars less. I mean, our ability, you know, because...
It's because it's a level funding, all these years.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you a secret. If you guys read the CIP, I did not put this, I have that funding every five years, increasing by twenty-five million. I mean, we, we go another fifteen, sixteen years, that value is going to be significantly less than the forty that we lost. Over the last three years, and the construction costs are increasing at six percent.
So, Mr. Sneed, Mr. Sneed, could you have that analysis given to us prior to our joint meeting with county board of supervisors?
By the twenty-sixth, I sure can.
Much before that, before than that.
Okay.
I'll, put me on, go back, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have, we have Ms. Dernick.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. I'm a little unclear about the membership analysis trends. Are we going to have a separate report out on that next, or...
No, the actual trends were the first part that we talked about, about the growth, the migration, in-migration, birth-to-kindergarten ratio. There is a document that we provide that goes into that level of detail, but, but we incorporated it in the CIP presentation. Again, Ms. Dernick, this is the exact thing that I was alluding to and the reason why you would ask for them to be separated in the future and brought the trends prior and then the CIP. So Ms. Gillis went through the trends component of all of those things I mentioned, birth-to-kindergarten and in-migration, out-migration. The actual report goes into greater length and detail in terms of demographics, ethnicity, and all the questions the board had asked.
That's the ninety-eight-page report in the second section, yeah. I didn't have the opportunity to review that, so I will just ask a very overarching question and then follow up later. Is there any thread of what's happening, you know, the majority, you know, why this, I know you talked about birth rates, and I know you talked about, but is there any, do you see any particular schools that are being affected and the reasons why? And I, and again, I apologize that I didn't go through the entirety of that report.
In particular, any one school in particular that we saw decline? We did the majority of our analysis at the pyramid level.
Okay.
So when we look at our different pyramids, then we got into even deeper into the elementary, the middle, and the high school.
Okay, and all that analysis is there in that report?
It is.
So, so I guess then I would just ask for purposes for the public here. So which pyramids did you see the highest declines?
It varied based on the school level.
Okay.
Was where I'm getting to. So if you looked at the elementary school level by pyramid, the decline was all over. So we have it by regions and we have it by pyramids. So most of it is in region three. So if I break that down even further into the elementary school pyramid, the Lee Pyramid saw the greatest decline, with two hundred and twenty-seven students decline at the elementary.
Sorry, Ms. Gillis, which page is that on in your...
It's page thirty-four of the membership report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I do a simple analysis year by year, and I, and I did see that, and I will go through that. And do you have any gut feeling why that happened, or, you know, that decline in my area in particular?
I'm not really sure. Part of it could be due to the fact that we have seen an out-migration in total. The decline is looking at the number of students that have left Fairfax County Public Schools. When students withdraw from our school system, they don't always give us a reason if they're going to attend another school. Or if they're leaving the state.
Okay, all right.
And sometimes we do have neighborhood shifts as well. So some of the comments that are made in other magisterial districts about how we have overcrowding in one school and another school doesn't, we're having shifts in, in one of those schools where the membership is not growing, and another one is because new families are moving into the neighborhood.
Right.
But you're right, there are a multitude of variables that come into play. That's why the demographics, I think, really help inform a lot of the conversation. And when you start looking further about cross-correlating this to program offerings and the like.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you. And I guess I had something with respect to my colleague's request, Ms. Strauss. Dr. Braybrand, I know, I thought we were going to put a temporary hold on limited boundary changes until we had a deeper analysis of the impact of that. Isn't that correct? Okay. So, and, and I forget exactly, is that Ms. Corbett Sanders', when is that coming up, Madam Clerk?
We have it scheduled for March, I believed, for the boundary, but I'll get you the exact date.
All right, all right. February or March, okay. I, I will just say this out loud, I, I really am not, because if we make an exception for one, there are ramifications for all. And I do have concerns about doing a limited boundary change in one area, because without taking a more holistic analysis and approach to this. And I do think in the end, we are going to have to do what staff has been advocating for while taking a holistic approach at our entire system and looking at the impacts. Ms. Ivy, you want to say something?
The boundary discussion is supposed to be on February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-fifth, okay. All right. Thank you. And, but I, I was, how about that, Kevin?
This isn't your last.
And, and I, I am going to just, Mr. Plattenberg, you briefly talked about, so I will ask this question, a more comprehensive county-wide look at boundaries, because you talk about adding the high school. You talked about how, when that happens, all of those high schools are going to be impacted. Again, just for this board, I, I think I know the answer, but if you could kind of reiterate, if, if we were to have a comprehensive budget, boundary discussion, looking at the whole county, what, what would your suggestion be to do it in approximate timeframe?
Just, if I may interrupt, Ms. Dernick Kofax, I would like, do you have other questions?
That is it after this.
That's fine. I, I, you, I, we gave you some latitude, but I wanted to make sure you got all your questions out.
Those were my two big questions.
We were right up on six minutes, but thank you, please answer.
Yeah, thank you. Two things. First of all, if the board will crawl, that was when FPAK and working with us previously, recommendation was called the nuclear option. And then the conversation with just some folks at the time, there was a lot of, a lot of angst over just the concept. A timeline associated with that, we do have a school, a boundary policy that we are going to begin that discussion we referenced. I think it would be appropriate that we work through that boundary policy, and we can either do it concurrently or then after that, subsequently to that, then to go ahead and have the conversation about what it would look like and have staff come back with a recommendation. I do believe it would require a third party, given some of the boundary recommendations. I know Dr. Braybrand has already had conversations with me about this, because he is always looking at every possible option. And in looking at that, the recommendation would be perhaps in a year, bring in that outside consultant after we get our boundary policy kind of worked through, navigated through at least to a point where we have an understanding of the direction. And have them come in and just take a look at the, at the metrics, take a look at, not only do we take a look at our enrollment, our trends, but we take a look at our programs, we take a look at transportation, we took all the elements that the members of this body have brought up from time to time, including trailers. And so they look at the metrics initially, and then subsequently to that, go out with the community to garner the input and the feedback, to allow the conversation to begin. And I realistically think that that process, having experienced in other school divisions that have taken similar processes and large-scale magnitude undertakings, such as the later start for high school, twelve years ago, seven years ago, and then finally a couple years ago, I do believe it is a five-to-seven-year process. And I'm just talking from beginning to gathering all that, to informing the elected officials about the community feedback with the data, and then, and then determining a way forward. That's just my experience. Sorry for the long answer.
It's, it's a big question, so it requires a lengthy answer. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And I guess I'll start with the amendment recommendation from Ms. Strauss, a little bit of a surprise, it is my district. And so I do, I guess I appreciate trying to address the problem. I have several high schools that are over capacity. That being said, every conversation I've had when we've looked at the smaller boundaries has been, I think, what Ms. Dernick Kofax raised, that we're trying to not start one-offs here and there, not just because of that, that brings me pause, but also the process and that we currently had, had a process that we could do an administrative boundary change with very little time or input from the community. So I guess I, I sent you an email, I'd love to hear more about what it is you are proposing.
It's a real boundary change, not administrative.
That's fine. I'm not saying that one is. I'm saying we have the three types of boundary changes, I believe, and anything we've looked at, the conversation has been, let's wait till we have this whole process, let's understand, because one can then lead to others. So the, the community time for input on a, on an amendment that is scheduled to be voted on in ten days, just brings me some pause. So I, I'm, I'd like to hear more. I'm not, at this point, inclined to, to support that, but would like to hear more information on that. That being said, I, I do have a couple of questions, and some of these just to clarify from the, for the community. My first one, actually... My first one actually is what Ms. Darren Kofax asked, and looking through more carefully, does look like we are able to see the, the breakdown and membership analysis by pyramid in school and school level from one year ago to, it's twenty-seventh, eighteen, eighteen school year to eighteen nineteen. In this, I know it's maybe not as graphically available as the CIP information, which is easy and beautiful to look at. So if there are ways we can kind of, I like that we're doing the presentations together. Perhaps in my mind, the next step is some of that trend analysis, if we're able to start to really have it more side by side with some of the CIP and the maps that we have, because I think it's all very helpful and just takes a lot of back and forth to be able to, to show and see how that's working. And especially to go, I don't know if we, if we can go back, because some of the big questions are in, in my area, we're still seeing growth, especially Oakton Fairfax community, even though overall there was a decline in enrollment. So I think that's pretty critical to be able to see the differences. My other question is around the multifamily, I know you said in your slide, and I think you phrased it differently, Ms. Gillis, is the multifamily, I think you said historically, we haven't seen huge, large numbers of student population, I think that's not, that's definitely not the trend we're seeing. And, and, and especially important to differentiate between this lovely pro- formula that is used for proffers versus what we see as actual enrollments based on housing and geographically and type of housing. So I know you have, and I was trying to find it, I know you have some information in your, in your packet in the trend analysis about page nineteen, I believe, Fairfax County Historical and Projected Total Housing Units. But that's just units, that doesn't, do we have somewhere actual numbers we're seeing out of different housing types or the way you and Mistress Need really look more geographically as to the actual enrollment we find with new developments? So I don't know, I know we've had these conversations on the Schools Committee Planning Commission, but if you, and I guess I'll stop in a minute after my last question, can provide more information? And I really want us to figure out how to communicate that, both to our partners in the county and to the, and to the community. As we, as we continue to grow, and my area really sees a lot of multifamily units coming in. There are children coming into those units, maybe not yet and maybe not at all, but that is what we see especially as units age. So if we can really get to a point, we've been having this conversation for a long time, as to how we really show our more accurate analysis of the expected enrollment from multifamily units, especially because that's the largest projected growth in the county. And then a, a couple of other things about the Tyson site, I don't know.
Palchuk, if you could.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to be, I haven't spoken a lot, so.
No, it's, it's okay.
I understand. Okay, so the Tyson site, I know you mentioned it, Mistress Need, I get a lot of questions from the community, I don't think we have it published anywhere yet. So, sorry, I know I want to get through my questions, if you could give more clarity and when we can really start to explain where that is and, and the capacity. And then finally, I know we recently did that boundary change, Jackson was very, very overcrowded, and now we are starting to see that capacity shift over to Thoreau Middle School, so if, if you could explain that. And then, sorry, one last thing, when it says unfunded projects, I think there is some confusion in the community as to what unfunded means. So I don't know if there's a better way we can describe that legally, that also just helps us understand what we mean, it's just not funded yet. Right, or future, projected future funding, that's, you know, requests for future funding to finish a project, not that we are not funding those projects. So I think those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, alright, did staff want to respond to any of that?
I'm trying to see if I can remember.
Yeah, I know.
That was good, you covered a lot of bases there. And I think you did a good job summarizing, especially multifamily homes. So typically, you don't see a lot of yield in the first fifteen, twenty years, and then over time, we do. So some of the conversations we had with the planning commission were in reference to the fact that we could, based on the newer multifamily, the proffer yields would be lower no matter what. If you recall that, and then over time, the proffers would not really be sufficient to fund the exact impact. So you also talked a little bit about the MOU, we've gone over this multiple times about the MOU. Jessica and her staff are working, she's also met with County Attorney's Office. I believe we have sufficient support within both the planning commission and a number of supervisors have also wanted to look at this. It's important to note, though, you know, this proffer formula we're referring to is only in these development areas that are identified. So it doesn't, if it's outside of that area, you know, we're looking at uncharted territory with the new law. So they're going to work on the yields by housing type, they'll talk about regionalizing, they're going to look at the amount of money that were compensated. You know, as I said, when I refer to that area out there, which is now called Innovation Station, it's the, the area by the Silver Line and the toll road at the western part of the county. You know, the funding that we, we were allocated through the proffers was, I don't know, it was ten, twelve million dollars.
Mistress Need, if I could pause you for a minute, because I think it, it just gets confusing into,
Right.
People think that proffer formula is how we do all of our projections for all of our schools.
Right, that was what I was going to touch on. And so by the proffer formula, we, because we had to use countywide averages, we could only, we were, that's why I gave a range from two to three thousand is, in that region, no matter when the homes are built, they have two over two condominiums, they have an incredibly high yield even from the very inception. So that would be an, an exception to maybe other areas of the county where those housing types are. You also asked about the Tyson's Elementary, the new one. We have that in our ten-year plan and the site is identified on our map, so.
Is it here?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
One thirty-four, or is it? I mean, we're, the Tyson's, we, at least from the county, we hear that the build-out of Tyson's will last through twenty-thirty, and which is about the time that we show this school opening where we think that if they start to yield significant numbers of students at the surrounding schools, will not have sufficient capacity to support those students.
So, can, going back to the last one, I guess, I think we understand that, I think you understand that. I think our county partners are understanding more and more the proffer versus how we do those projections. I guess where I have pauses, when we're saying, we, we don't see large yield out of multifamily units, and then that's not the reality of fifteen years once they're built. Can we stop communicating that, I guess is my question? Can we show with more accuracy, that we have more accuracy as to where those yields are coming from? That's, that's my question, why we're still having that conversation if we know that's not the case? That's fine, yeah, and I guess I don't want to get in, in between the work you're already doing to address that.
And, and.
And what we can do, so.
Clearly, and, and I think, I think it is to the points that have been made, it clearly is a good dialogue for the legislative liaison,
Yeah.
for the governing bodies to have that conversation. We can provide what we've done in the background and with the Schools Committee for the Planning Commission, but certainly it is a much higher level of order.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Palchuk. If it, I can put you down to go back if you would like to continue.
Did you just have that page where Tyson's is listed?
Page one thirty-four.
One thirty-four, okay.
Did you want me to put you back for go back?
Sure, that'd be fine, thank you.
Alright, we have next, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, I appreciate the increasing detail in the CIP, it's, it, it does get better every year. And, and Mr. Snead, we will miss you very, very much. A couple of comments and then some questions, and I, I, I know right now I'm going to need to go back, so. One comment is that as, as you have recorded, we do have, we, we're doing a lot of building at the same time that we have a lot of capacity. And so I do think that one of the things as an overarching issue is for us as a board and the facilities staff and the superintendent to look for more ways to use current capacity, rather than just try to keep building. So I do think that that should be a goal of this board. That's, that's my, my view. Also, I, on a, I, I don't know if this is what Mr. Moon was getting at or not, but I do think that we need to continue to push for more spending authorization. The fact that we lost ground and now happily, you know, we've gotten some more, some more funding, but with construction costs going up, really, it's, I, I believe in here somewhere, it says that we basic, the increase of the twenty-five million basically is just helping us keep up with increasing construction costs. So I would be happy to work with my colleagues on some sort of an amendment or follow-on to, to suggest asking for increased funding. I think that we, we need to keep asking for it, and, and I appreciate, Mr. Snead, you putting this in for every five years, but I think we need to ask for it now. And down the road, I also believe that we need to get a better method by which we can compare our renovation cycle with the counties and have an, an apples-to-apples comparison. I know when, when we looked at Infrastructure Financing Committee, we, we didn't have the apples-to-apples, I think we still don't. And at least, at least when we get to the next renovation queue, once we're done renovating all of our schools, including all of our high schools, then, you know, we, we need to have the apples-to-apples. So those are my two overarching comments, but I have some nitty-gritty things. As I had said in my questions to you, and thank you both, Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Snead for sitting down with me and talking with, with me about specifics in my district. The calculation on program capacity without the modulars, that's something that this board had asked for a year ago, do you have that?
We do have available, Jessica's team produced that report a year ago, we'll find it and have it sent to you.
I, I did have things in there that I wanted to discuss today, is that something you could send us now?
No, I don't know if we have.
Well, I had specifically asked for the figures for some schools in my district, and in particular Glen Forest.
If you could help us with, you know, what it is you're looking for specifically? I know we don't have that right now and haven't provided that obviously in advance because the other members don't, I don't believe have that. We certainly could follow up, but I know you said you want to go over it now, so.
Well, I, I mean, we did ask for it a year ago. We asked for, for capac- program capacity at all of our schools, want to remove the modular capacity, that was one of our next steps. And it's, it's not there. So I'm not sure why we didn't get that, but the.
We'll have to follow up as to why you didn't get it, because we forwarded it up on March twenty-second, there may have been something wrong with it. But we, you know, clearly we could have, between March twenty-second, when it was originally requested, and now, we could have had this conversation and, and been able to research it. I, I didn't know that we did not provide it, and I apologize.
Okay, alright. Then in that case, can someone pull out for me that figure for Glen Forest? Because that's specifically the school I wanted to discuss today.
Ms. Evans, can we put that down?
Sure.
Go back?
Yeah, I have plenty of go back.
Alright, okay. We have Ms. Hines. Okay, we have Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you. I don't know if I should do the Ms. Evans approach and say, I'm going to have a go back, just be prepared, so. But I do want to say, first of all, Ms. Palchuk, thank you for trying to drive home something that I know I've been talking with staff about, I've been talking with my Braddock District Planning Commissioner as well as our at-large Planning Commissioner, which is Mary Cortina, and other planning commissioners. We cannot continue to have a problem, and I, I don't know, Mr. Snead, if I misunderstood, or you, Mr. Plattenberg, on where the power rests. But for my colleagues, there's an issue with a new development proposal over near Fairfax Villa Elementary, which feeds into Frost and Woodson, which are both already overcrowded. And it came to my attention that some developers are soliciting a propos- or bringing a proposal to the county to build. The proffer formula projection for the proposal underestimates the number of students that this project will produce. And so what I asked staff to do is to give me what are the existing houses that are there and use the proffer formula for how many they expect of fa- of students to come out of that building structure? And then how many did we actually end up having out of those building structures? And that's a way, because it's sort of unique, they're going to eliminate forty-six affordable housing units and put in a hundred and forty new ones. So we're looking at sort of a, a, a way of saying, we already have housing in this area, how good have we been at being able to determine the number of students it yields? And then use that as a benchmark to what the proffer formula currently says we can expect out of the new hundred and forty. Not to get too detailed, but what I'm trying to say is that around this county of a million-plus people and a school division of a hundred and ninety thousand kids, if we right now have a proffer formula for, for anticipating projected enrollment growth in our schools, and it's wrong and it's inaccurate, and our staff is doing really good work internally, the disconnect between us saying, well, our staff could actually tell you the real impact this is going to have, but here's the standard formula, and that's what we're supposed to turn over to the board of supervisors and the, the Planning Development Office and the Planning Commission, so our hands are tied. The Fairfax Villa development is overall a tiny impact on our public schools. But I'm thinking about Ms. Palchuk's district, the Providence district, and what's happening in Tyson's redevelopment, the impact on Drainsville's district, and Ms. Strauss's, the Route One corridor and all of the developments going there, it's and, and, and. And so I guess, Mr. Plattenberg, at a very macro level, what I wanted and hoped for today was that even though I know the Schools Committee for the Planning Commission is trying to iron some of these things out, and Dr. Braybrand, your leadership's going to be essential on this, but the board, we own this in the end. When I talk to the planning commissioners, they point the finger back at us and say, you as a division, if you have a problem with the proffer formula for projecting enrollment of students in new building proposals, then speak up, do something and tell us what the new formula should be. So I don't want to leave this work session without some clarity on who's going to own it, how are we going to address it? But we can't sit here anymore on our hands and say, it's just a shame that the proffer formula is different from our internal formula.
If, thank you.
Well, I'm worried about losing my three minutes.
No, you're not. Well, you're actually already used your three minutes.
I did use my three minutes, okay, well then, I'll just go to my go back.
No, 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 I, I want to, I wanted to.
They can answer and then I'll have my other ones as a go back.
I know, but I had, as a meeting manager, I had this discussion with them, so I wanted them to bring out the information we discussed, which I think will address your concern.
I, I have a go back on other issues related to the CIP, which, by the way, Madam Chair, I love the burden of your job, but to put these two issues together and try to cram it into two hours, I'm, I'm worried. Well, okay, then I guess, Ms. Kizkemar, I definitely get a go back because we have three hours to discuss.
I'm, I'm happy to put you, I'm happy to put you.
No, no, I think we should for the audience, though, I did want an answer. A lot of people ask the questions in three minutes and then staff answers, so I do need an answer from my question, and you can provide part of that answer first if you like.
I was actually going to ask them to provide for you the, the discussion we had in preparing for this meeting.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Clearly, thank you both, clearly this is an area where it, there, there are, is fraught with opportunities. Because there's a, there's a, there's a definite misunderstanding about what is provided at a staff level for staff as far as a proffer and the impact versus our projections on the actual number of students that will come out. that will come out of a development. So in the area that we're talking about, when we go ahead and provide a proffer estimate to the county of student yield, it's based upon an agreed-upon formulaic approach, a math equation, if you will. That math equation, for the purposes of equity across the county, by the county, is to make sure that the impact on a developer, who may volunteer to submit to a proffer and provide that, is equitably distributed across the county. The reality of the situation is, that's proffer and the proffer conversation about the math equation associated with that. We work together, there's a lot of history, we've gone through that before. In terms of our projections, our projections are based upon the region, the area, the special planning area, what we call SPA's, and what we have experienced, the exponential data of student yields by housing type. So when we have an equitable distribution for the purpose of voluntary funding from a developer versus what we're saying is the projection that we believe is gonna be coming from the student yield in that, there is a disparity, and therein lies the opportunity for the conversation to delve further. Other counties, other jurisdictions, look at things as regionalizing. They look at them in a number of different ways that help address exactly what has been brought up by many members of this body. That conversation is a deep one, and I think it requires a lot of understanding and commitment by all members because, at the end of the day, the decision-makers related to that need the information from the staff, absolutely, but there needs to be an agreement on the decision on what is and what is not going to be provided. A lot of this came to light after the legislation changed and made it so it was, had to be more specific on the impact for things like schools.
So if I'm, I may, and I'm just gonna interject just because we had, we were able to have a longer conversation, and I'd like to turn this into a next step, if I can, because I think a number of us have some questions about this. So I think if we can make it, have first of all, an opportunity for a board to get a longer conversation about what this entails, that the county, in fact, is really dictating. They provide some numbers that we have to use, and then there's a factor of .5, I understand. It's agreed upon. So, but in any case, I think we...
Years passed, it's antiquated, legacy...
So I think, first of all, we need an explanation of how this works. And second of all, we need a discussion about ways that we, as a board, can then advocate for something that we find to be more appropriate.
Can I just briefly, the county actually has built into their legislative plan this year a push to change the proffer law at the state level because of the negative impacts that have occurred as a result of the change in legislation. And so as part of anything you're asking for, it should be built in, what specifically the county is asking for.
That is true, however, the proffer law is only a part of the problem. Okay, so I think that that should be part of the discussion with respect to making sure that the board is educated on how we're impacted by this, and then also the steps that the county will be taking and how we can perhaps enhance and advocate for what we need. So I'm suggesting that we kind of gather some of the comments that each of you have made as a next step. And Dr. Braybrand...
Jeff, Jeff, can I do a Jeff Scott thing with the board watching? Okay, the state had a proffer law, and it's less generous to schools than it used to be, right? Right now, we give, because the county, and we've got an agreement, we give one formula, one number to the county, but the truth is, the yield really differs by region in Fairfax County. We would like to be able to regionalize the projections.
There's an opportunity there.
Yes, we'd like to do that.
We'd like to change the formula, not divide by .5, by 5.
So... The board wants to direct us to do something, and part of it will be, what direction does the board want to give us to get to what you want from your team? So I think that's part of what we'll need to figure out in here, so that the more specific we can give them information to direct us, the better we'll be able to advance the ball between now and when we have our next meeting in February.
And Ms. Gillis has been in the process of running the new MOU, drafting the language.
It sounds like, though, you want to regionalize, we want to have the right to regionalize our projections to the county planning, to have the dynamic yield that's different in one part of the county for another, so we capture the true cost of development in the area in terms of its impact to schools.
Yeah, Ms. Keisgamar, I just want to make sure the request isn't diluted in here somewhere because I keep hearing this back and forth. Mine is definitely specific to this board's authority and what we communicate to the board supervisors. When Ms. Corbett Sanders is talking about the state and the proffer laws, I'm all happy to do that as another piece, but I'm a little worried that Mr. Plattenberg has been talking about what's in our authority and what isn't. And what's in our authority is to affect the information we provide to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, plain and simple, right?
I'm seeing Ms. Corbett Sanders's comment as another step of understanding to make sure that we understand the context, right? Because there's some things going on with the county right now that they're considering with respect to the proffer law. Understanding that proffer law is another aspect of us understanding, but it is not the entire pie.
Right, but we can fix some of this ourselves, no matter what happens at General Assembly.
But in my view, we need to have that educational discussion so that we can then do as Dr. Braybrand suggested and direct the staff, direct the superintendent to do what we're asking regarding our authority.
Amen, as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add clarification? There's really, the proffer law that we're discussing are for areas not and in the economic development centers. The formula, which is the MOU between us and the county, is the, what we're gonna attempt to rewrite with support of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, but, right, so...
That's the next step. That's in what we were discussing, absolutely. That's definitely within that, so...
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Because I know formulas aren't perfect. And so I was trying to say, the formula is part of it, and then MOU. What I've heard from several of those members of the Schools Committee is, can we have additional information if this is not accurate for a very specific area? So I guess, I don't want that to get lost.
And that's the reason I'm asking for a discussion for the board, to be able to have that more comprehensive approach. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just don't want that part to get lost.
I didn't think it did.
Thank you.
Next on my list, I have Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a whole lot of questions, but I do have a couple. I appreciate all the great questions we've had already. The first question I have has to do with the enrollment projections and the concept of contracted growth that is highlighted on Slide 5. The question is specifically, with elementary membership projected to decline, I think each year, in the next several subsequent years, just maybe provide some explanation today that the community can hear as to why we still think we will have overall projected growth when we certainly didn't see that this year with the decline? Because we know that it's very consistent from birth to enrollment, that percentage. And I think, you know, I think this relates to the membership growth occurring in some areas, but not in others. And I really appreciate that map that shows sort of the emphasized areas. So I think that's the first question. The second question really has to do with the, specifically to the Northwest County Elementary School, because I'm intrigued by what you mentioned, that this is the first true community school that's been developed. So I wonder whether you could talk a little bit about what it will include? I know you mentioned a community center. Will it have daycare for the teachers who could bring their kids there, potentially to that school? And what other ways could we, with that project in particular, make it maybe more teacher-friendly? Because I think that the way we can keep some of these teachers beyond the compensation is to meet the needs that they have, which are, you know, housing, daycare, salary, of course, and transportation.
Okay, you raised a very good question. The first question that you mentioned, you were talking about the enrollment trends and what are the impacts, because you see a repeating theme of decreasing at the elementary level and then at the secondary. You know, how come we're saying we're still growing? If you take a look at the trend analysis, what we show in migration and outmigration, this was the first year we had a negative net in-migration, meaning we had more students leaving than coming. So theory and technically, one would presume, right? That's why we do an annual review of that five-year projection. One would presume that we would still have more in-migration. And your comment about looking at that in regional aspects, that's exactly what we've been experiencing in some regions of the county, growing at the middle school level, if you will, or the secondary level. I think we can definitely go into more conversation about that in the future as to what some of the other data elements are that we look at, that we believe that to be. We have been saying for some time, contracted growth, but still growth. This year, we had a negative result, right? And that's why, again, we do this annually. We do believe that we're gonna still see some of those trends. And we have situations like what Mr. Sneed mentioned, of the 10,000 new units with the potential of 2,000 to 3,000 students coming. Those are the reasons why we continue to think that we're gonna have growth. But patterns can shift and things can change. And that's why we revisit this each and every year. So that was a very good point that you made that requires a lot more unraveling and digging deeper into the data elements, which we can certainly provide. The other one...
So in regard to Northwest County, you know, and I don't think anybody's ever approached me yet here about daycare for teachers. So the way we designed the community center, it's a little over 3,000 square feet, has, it could be one large room, or it could have three rooms with divisible, you know, partitions, and so it adds flexibility to the space. And the county is gonna have the opportunity to program that space. However, they want to use it. So is there sufficient space for that? There most likely is, I assume, depending on how they use it. We weren't gonna get involved in that particular program. And it has exterior entrances, we have parking, additional parking on site for that. And we thought this would be, you know, we've talked about community schools for a long time, and many times we got to the altar and never really crossed over. And in this particular case, when we met with Supervisor Hudgens, she knew that we had proposed things like this for years, so she asked us to construct it within the school. I think the real interesting thing will be to see what the county actually provides in that space.
Just a quick, just a very quick follow-up. Since this is a new type of project, a new capital-type project, and it's coming, the capital expenditure part, now I realize that there's a lane component here, but the capital costs are coming 100% out of the school system's pot of money. Since it's gonna have community use, it's obviously 20, you mentioned 24/7 community use. Has there been discussions with the county about, since it will be programmed in part by the county in terms of sharing that capital cost?
I was hoping to avoid answering this because it's not necessarily related to that, but, you know, you've got 250 SAC classrooms and 92 Head Start rooms, which are both county projects, essentially 350 elementary classrooms. And, you know, so when you talk about a funding piece, I think that that's a component. And I'm not being critical of SAC or FSEP Head Start. This, to me, was a very similar request. And in fact, we did not design SAC rooms into the school. They already have SAC at the original elementary. And we said, you know, "This is your space to use in a flexible manner." I mean, two SAC rooms is about 1,800 square feet, so then we're not necessarily 100% compensated for those either. So we just viewed it as a similar situation.
All right. Okay, I have just a couple of things because I use part of it to make my next step. There is, or at least I received information, and I want to make sure I ask the question, there's some concern about the negative migration of Hispanic students in particular. And I didn't know whether we, there's a way that we can dig into that and try to identify what we're dealing with. But if that's the case, I'd like to explore that.
Here, you want to answer, or you want me to? Okay, so as some of you all have been on the board for a while, knew, up until a few years ago, and we didn't, in planning, we weren't able to track migration, in my opinion, accurately. But we had the capability to do that. We were surprised, this is the first year that we've had a decline in Hispanic membership. Traditionally, over the last few years, we would see our biggest growth was either, was, fairly consistent was Hispanic and Asian students. So yes, this year has been rather pronounced. I'm not exactly sure if we're the right office or if there should be somebody else to look into it. We, and the other thing with this enrollment report is when I, when we first started it, we really did not, we could just look at whole numbers. But here, we have an amount of specificity that we've not had, especially the fact that we dealt into ethnicity, FRM, things of that nature. And usually when we add information, it's based on questions that you guys ask from one year to the next. We modify the report, so we don't get a next step, we just go ahead and give it to you. Jessica, do you have any more information regarding the out-migration?
For Hispanic students, we had quite a number of them that dropped out of out-migration, included students who were seeking full-time employment or attending, they joined the military service, or they withdrew from our service, or our public schools and started attending other public schools, either in the state of Virginia or another US public school.
There seems to be, and it's, I'm not, I don't know whether it's accurate or not, I'm just stating it. There's some belief that there, that migration has something to do with immigration concerns and that of that, and I don't know. But it, to the extent that we could identify some of those, what you just described, in a way that the public could have access to it, I think that we may be able to allay some of the speculation that is going on.
A lot of that information is great to have, is voluntary after the fact, so it's really challenging to get the level of specificity, of finality and fidelity that we would like.
I hesitated to ask the question, but at the same time, I also am concerned about things floating that can grow up into something really concerning in the community. So if we can't address it, I would like to. Thank you. We're ready for go-backs? Mr. Moon?
I'm gonna go to boundary adjustments and funding issues again, that, I'm looking at the data provided in the CIP, that there are a lot of schools being underutilized. I mean, I'm gonna be using just 85% as an arbitrary number, that, because you always want to leave some room for growth or flexibility. So I'm not really shooting for 100% utility. So using 85% as a benchmark. There are a lot of schools under 85. So with that data available to everybody, what sort of approach should we take for a boundary adjustments? Either before or at the same time, we ask for additional capital funding from County Board of Supervisors? And if we do, I don't know whether staff has thought about this, if we do boundary adjustments to maximizing the use of the schools being underutilized, again, I'm using 85, so putting the uses up to 85% lever, how much of the gap of capital funding do you think we can reduce by?
So, well, I don't know, we all have to do the math.
Okay.
I think it's pretty evident that we're talking a significant quantity of boundary studies, but the... studies, but the, I do also believe, because I've heard this from board supervisor members myself, is you all are asking for extra money. I mean, I'm sure each of you have, you have trailers at the facility, yet you have adjacent facilities with space. And so, I mean, it would take some work for us to do. As Mr. Wilson also pointed out, when he asked the question, is we have a declining enrollment at the elementary level, which is going to, as you can see, in the five-year timeframe, there's quite a few bit more schools that are below that 85% threshold. Some of these would not be huge boundary changes, you know, you may be looking at a neighborhood or two. The idea in our, from our perspective, would be avoid capital costs, because we have limited funding and use adjacent surplus capacity.
So, with your retirement date of February 28th in mind, but more importantly, our joint meeting date with the supervisors being February 26th, do you have enough time to do that study and provide us with information so that we can be intelligently discuss that with the supervisors? Because, again, I don't want to kick the can down the road by saying that we don't have enough information, so let's schedule a meeting in 2020.
I agree with you, and I brought our Assistant Director, Brady Ralph, here, so he's going to start to write some reports for the board as well. Jessica and Brady and I will work together and make sure you all have this information prior to the 26th.
Thank you very much, but I don't want to have that on the 25th either.
Yeah, no, it'll be
At least two weeks prior to the meeting, so that I can have a time to read and ask some follow-up questions.
We'll do the best we can, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Was that a next step, Mr. Moon?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, next we have Ms. Pouchak.
Sorry, but most of my follow-ups were asked, the only ones, I still would like more information is, I don't know if this is being prepared for the MOU, but to be able to get a better sense of our current multifamily yields, whether it's regionally, by pyramid, by year, I think just having that information would be very helpful, figuring out how we term and communicate what unfunded means. And then, the Thoreau Middle School question, I don't know, now that we've gone through that, and I believe next year, we're going to see an even bigger migration from Jackson to Thoreau, what our, what our plans are to work to address that in the future.
Well, if you recall, during the, during the boundary study, we all knew that, we knew the quantity of kids, these are primarily, we were reticulated out of the Oakton Pyramid into the Jackson AAP Center. So, we, I just think, just nobody thought that these kids would voluntarily leave a middle school AAP Center to return to a middle school that doesn't have AAP, right? I mean, and that's essentially, you know, part of what all the collective thinking here within FCPS was, was the kids would still stay at the boundary, or at Luther Jackson. But essentially, what's happening is that these kids are just going into all honors at Thoreau in lieu of staying at an AAP Center. You know, this is, that's the hardest part about projections, is when you're not talking about folks are locked into a boundary, now you're trying to predict behavior, which is a whole different color. And I know there wasn't just, you know, me, you, and Pat and Jessica, there was a lot of other folks who did not believe that those kids would leave Jackson, they would stay in the AAP Center, you know? So, I just think collectively, you know, nobody really anticipated what happened.
Okay, I guess my question is, we're moving forward, I think, let's not, whether, you know, however we got to there, I don't know if you have thoughts, or if there's something of the next conversation.
Did you have a next step, Ms. Pouchak?
I mean, I know you wanted to know, how would we actually handle that at Thoreau? You know, I haven't looked, I mean, because they're not over capacity currently, it's only what's projected. I think the other important thing, you know, not that parents who have kids at middle schools would like this, but when you look at RK, the four cohorts in the system now, they're significantly smaller than our fifth through 12. So, the likelihood, unless something were to change, is we're going to have, you know, a few years' pressure at our middle and high school, and all of a sudden, these small cohorts are going to come through. And forget, I mean, we're showing a 3,000 student drop roughly at the elementary level, and that's just due primarily to, just the birth rate is significantly smaller.
Well, it is currently, I guess, it's continued to be over projection, over capacity, just to clarify that. So, I guess, it's just, it's a question. So, currently, staff's plan is continue to use as is and find internal ways to address it. I just want to clarify that as that question arises.
And we work with, in case folks don't know, we work with every school to help them become more efficient, in an effort not to ever increase the quantity of temporary classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. As a next step, I would ask my college, colleagues, just to indulge me for a second, I would like the breakdown, I would like a five-year comparison of all schools in the Lee Pyramid. Because we saw a minus 6.1% of the kids in the pyramid, I would just like to see the elementary school breakdown over the five years and see where, where they come from. And I would think my colleagues would think that's significant, considering that was the highest. So, when we do next steps, I would appreciate your support on that. And secondly, I had the opportunity to peruse, while listening to my colleagues, the page, I didn't get through it all, but, but thank you so much, the pages for the 98-page report. Jessica, thank you so much. And I have to say that, at my first blush, I guess, I guess, Scott, I have to ask you this question, and I, I know I'm putting you on the spot here, and you don't have your instructional team here, but do you believe that tipping point studies have validity?
Yes.
Okay.
When I was in Lynchburg, I received a study from Charlotte Mecklenburg that did its own, and the results of that study said that 20%, look, I'm a straight shooter, and we need to be honest, if we're going to have an equity conversation, we're going to be honest, this was a Charlotte Mecklenburg study. It said that 20% white families notice diversity, they notice there are races other than themselves. The study from Charlotte Mecklenburg said that about 50% was where white families started to make different school decisions, because their child would go from being a majority status to a minority status in a classroom. And as you know, Charlotte Mecklenburg spent a lot of time with transportation issues and trying to move because of the segregation, the legacy of segregation in that, that system in North Carolina. The reality for Fairfax, in a way, is the white students have not been the majority population across this county now for some years. You'd have to go back almost, I don't have it off the top of my head, it's been a long while. This became a minority-majority system probably 15 years ago. But those factors are still in play. I think part of the conversation is, we've got to say, and I heard it as I grew up through here, that diversity is a strength in this system. It provides kids opportunities and exposure that they've never had before. But something the board has said earlier is, the equity lens is needed so that the gaps that some, some people will choose no matter what, because of the social phenomena to still make a decision. But even as you look at some of the stuff, there's, there's pyramids where, there are pyramids that are growing, that don't necessarily have a majority white distribution. We've got to look at what's going on in those schools and make sure that we're not having glaring gaps in funding, staffing, teacher turnover. We've got to put all those lenses on and offer the very best product, and a product that is excellence, and that is equity, and that is effectiveness.
Right.
And that's consistent year to year, and I think we can mitigate it. Will we stop all of it? No, because society is what it is. But I think in this area, there are more people willing to entertain diversity. Remember, Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg studies North Carolina, and I'm just saying, and I went farther south from here, there does not necessarily determine here. And I think we have different communities here. But is it, is it, do I believe it as a factor? I absolutely do. And I think we've got to do everything we can to make sure our marketing, our staffing, our teacher quality, our principal quality, our programs, and this whole issue that you brought up today about equity in athletics and extracurricular funding is real. It is real. In Lynchburg, one of our high schools didn't fund a lacrosse team. Guess what? It was the school that was majority, it was, it was majority-minority. Oh, well, a lacrosse team, you know, we don't need that. Well, that's a message to other folks who feel lacrosse is a culturally interesting sport that says, I'm welcome the other way. Are we welcoming families that have associated with lacrosse? So, what was happening? We were having to do student transfers for athletic reasons to the other school that had the, the majority, that was a majority, majority white school. So, we've got to explore that ourselves, and I think One Fairfax has given leadership team and me more permission to delve into that more, and then come forward in a thoughtful way. It's not to cast aspersions on folks, but it is to have us look at, we're a very good school system, how can we be the best school system ever? And part of it is talking about these issues.
You talked about it from a racial lens, so what about from the socioeconomic lens?
You know, I don't know that the Charlotte Mecklenburg study looked at socioeconomics. I don't remember.
Right.
I don't remember. I'd have to try to go back.
Yeah. Well, we had, we had a
And look at that.
We had a study here a few years back about the impact of the socioeconomics on, on the schools. And if we, if we could at least ask, that would be another next step, if we could ask staff to look at that and see if there's validity to it, or if it needs to be done again, I think that would be important. Because as I went through this, my colleagues, if you look at, if you want to see racial segregation, look at pages 17 and 18 in this report, socioeconomic segregation on page 51. We have to have a very, very courageous conversation on, on this issue. And it's, it's not going to be easy, because, like you said, of all the factors that happen, Scott, but I think for me, I'm very concerned about the socioeconomic impact, less of, like you said, you can't, you can't mitigate people's opinions, but the socioeconomic, and we talk about, when we talk about tipping point studies in, in that respect, I think it's something we really, really have to think about, because the tipping point study, as I recall, said when a school gets to 41% poverty, it's so weighed down. And so many of ours are at that, but many, many aren't. And that's indicative of those, those pages there, and on page 51 in particular. So, it's, it's, this, this conversation, you know, the two big topics that I brought up are two very, very sensitive topics. But you talk about the nuclear option with boundaries, and then you talk about the impacts of socioeconomic and other types of segregation, and, and we as a system, if we're serious, we have to look at how this is impacting us.
But if I could, just on one thing on there, because, because we're doing it, and I want to say it, one thing, and it was the past, and I'm sure I was here, and I think I probably was, said that, but I would urge, if we're going to have an equity lens, that we shouldn't be calling something a nuclear option. Because that's already, that's a loaded
I agree.
And I don't mean that, I don't mean it disrespectfully.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying, because it was.
A comprehensive review of our boundaries.
Right. But I'm saying, our own recoding of that is our own set of, that's its own communication that I think we've got to think about, and even how we own, how staff owns it with you all.
110% correct.
So, I think what we need, one of the things that I've been able, when I talk to parents, how is your child doing in our school system? We need to shift, to stop looking at schooldigger and whatever, greatschools.com, and start looking at, in my household, how is my child doing? When we ask that question, we are going to have a much, much more comprehensive and holistic look at what Fairfax County is doing for young people. And I think families will respond. And we need to figure out how the folks who are experiencing the Fairfax County experience are sharing their story, because that's part of the problem. They're getting to the websites in this age of social internet, instead of having rich conversations with families who've experienced what we've had. And where we know that we are not equal, we've got to make, accelerate getting
A supplement.
And supplements, so that there aren't gaps, that families go, oh, my gosh, you mustn't be looking for me at this school, because there isn't this here, or isn't that there. And so, that's the conversation
That's why I shared my input, because the Realtor said to me, she was once invited by a principal to hear a panel of students out of school, and after seeing what they were doing at the school, she felt very positive and very confident, even though technically they're not allowed to share.
Right, well, that, yeah, that, but that
Do that, right.
We, our schools
But they don't all do that, and they don't all systematically do that.
They don't all do that, and, and I think, I do appreciate your optimism, Scott, and your rebranding of my language. But I do also think, you, you know, there's a couple of schools that we've been working on, and, and I mentioned that in my earlier comments, that if you get them there, they will have those conversations, they will say what a positive experience they've had, they will say that. And that's happened in so many of my schools. But the reality from the numbers we're seeing is, there's not enough of them that we're getting, so we're losing them. And there is this resegregation on a couple of different lines, and so, we have to be very deliberate and honest, and when we talk about it.
Next, we have Ms. Evans.
Thank you, and I'm glad I'm following Ms. Darnett Kofax. I do believe that the issue of economic resegregation, socioeconomic resegregation is the big issue that our board has to face in the next couple of years, and I agree, we have to have a courageous conversation about it. We also have to have an action plan on it. The Planning Commission Schools Committee has put that in, in the report that we are continuing to work on, and the board will see that. CPDC has included that as one of the big rocks. So, I think we have recognized, this particularly is part of the One Fairfax, we've recognized it, but now we need to go to the next step and deal with it, and, and have an action plan on it. So, thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax, for, for focusing on that. And thank you for sending us the modular information. I think that's very, very telling, I don't know how many board members have had a chance to look at it, but, so, I do want to focus on a couple of parochial issues, and one is Glen Forest. Glen Forest has 1,100 students now. And so, whereas in, in our, in our maps, it's shown as not being over capacity, the fact of the matter is that that school was made for 760 kids, not for 1,100. Mr. Sneed, do you remember what year it was you put that modular in there?
Well, I remember the first one was 99, I think the second was, I'm going to, probably 2004 or '05.
So, that's, that, that first one's getting, getting pretty old, wasn't it a, an old one at the time? I believe you've told me that, yeah.
Yes, well, we had two that came from Fort Belvoir, but they were not like the modulators today. I mean, they still form full classrooms, but these were just basically a frame with a roof and a floor, and we had to build everything else.
So, I think it's important, I, my, my point in asking for this is that I do think sometimes the inclusion of the modular can mask the reality of a situation. And right now, I believe it's masking the reality of the Glen Forest situation. 1,100 kids at a very high poverty, very high mobile, very high ESOL school, on a tiny little road, where I believe we have 18 buses going in and out of a very small street, it gets It gets backed up in the morning, it gets backed up at night. Um, uh, the, the school is worried that it's dangerous there. Uh, the, this is a situation where the PTA has actually come to the school system and asked us to do a boundary study. Uh, how often does that happen? That the school asks to have some of their students go to another school? That doesn't really happen very often. We have had a couple of meetings, um, a couple of very extensive community meetings. And, um, that school is behind having, um, a limited boundary study. So I'm going to go back to the conversation about boundary studies. I know we're going to have the larger conversation, but I don't think that we should automatically freeze everything between now and the time that we set a policy and go out and get a consultant and have a, a long conversation. I would, um, I am going to request that Glen Forest have a limited boundary study. Um, we do have space, uh, next door. Um, I don't think we have to have a, a lengthy regional study for this. I think that we can scope it out as a, a, a more limited, uh, conversation. And, um, and, and they're hoping that we can do it this school year for next school year. I don't know if that's even, uh, realistic, but I do think we have to get going on it. So, um, I'll have conversations with each of you about how you feel about that. But, um, I would advocate for that. We, the, the school community does need relief, and they, they need it sooner rather than later. Eleven hundred kids at that kind of a school on that kind of a, um, a property just, um, is, is not, is, is not a good situation. And I'll just mention that Glasgow has eighteen hundred kids too. Um, that's a very high poverty school as well. And, you know, now happily, they got a modular a year ago, and so they got relief. And so they're, they're doing pretty well. But I think we just have to be, um, we have to monitor a situation like that where we have that many kids. You know, that is the, the largest middle school in the state of Virginia. Um, so, you know, again, the, the modular can, can make it look like everything's just dandy, but we have to be considering too, uh, where we are with core space. Um, a couple of other small things. I'm delighted that you're putting together a community school. I had hoped that Mason would be the first with Williston. We didn't make it, um, but, um, I, I will ask, and we've had this conversation, that we include the Williston site on page one thirty-four. So I don't know if that needs to be a next step or if we just asked for it, but I guess I would like to, um, no, the county owns it. Uh, we've, but we, we've had conversations, and I believe it was maybe two years ago. It has been in the CIP before. I'm not sure how it, why it wasn't in the CIP this year. But, um, but the county has said that they would be willing to, uh, coordinate with us at that site. So that is a site where, where it's a potential site. It's not a current site, but it's a potential site. So I would ask that, um, staff note that, um, and continue to at least flag that as a possibility because we had had county conversa- conversations with the county about making that a, a true community school with county services and school services there.
So you're, you're making that a next step, I would hope?
Uh, yes, let's make that a next step to, to include that. Um, I, I, I believe I wrote this to the full board too. This is a, a small potatoes thing, but, um, Brenmore Park, all of Brenmore Park goes to Edison, um, and yet it's listed in the, in the Anandale Pyramid. Um, I'm not asking that this be a boundary study. I am asking to recognize that it's really in the Edison Pyramid, not in the Anandale Pyramid. Um, Mason Crest, most of the students there go to Falls Church. None of them go to Anandale, but they're listed in the Anandale Pyramid. I think that gives an unrealistic view of the Anandale Pyramid because, uh, the Ma- none of the Mason Crest kids go to Anandale. So I would ask that that be included, um, in the future in the, in the Falls Church Pyramid. But I, I'm happy to hear from staff as to why that is a bad idea, if you think it's a bad idea. Is that fine? Okay. And I guess I would ask that to be a next step too then, just to, to codify it. Uh, I'm, I'm, I see you telling me I'm, I'm at my time.
Way past.
Way past, way past my time. Okay, in that case, I'll be done for now, and then I'll let you know if I need another go back.
Okay, all right, we are going to Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate hearing some of the things my colleagues are saying because, um, one of the things that we all realize, especially those of us who are Magisterial Districts, is there's nine different districts with nine different needs. And, um, we don't get to hear from each other about what they're all dealing with. Um, so I'm sensitive to the fact that what's happening in Braddock District isn't necessarily a direct concern for the other, um, at least eight other board members who have their own districts to work with. I so appreciate that I can count on my three at larges that you feel equal ownership, um, to each one of our districts. Um, I've said this the other night, and I'm going to say it right now with, like, as many exclamation points as can be conveyed. What is going on with our boundary change process is completely broken. Um, I'm listening to Ms., Ms., um, Strauss talk about the needs at Langley and McLean, and I'm very sensitive to that. I'm listening to, to Ms. Evans talking about the needs at Glen Forest. And I'm sitting here looking at Braddock District that I've spent six plus years talking to Kevin and Jeff about, that Little Run in Old Creek at our, at three to four hundred students each. They're projected to be at sixty-two to seventy-eight percent capacity. And meanwhile, one mile away, part of the Woodson Pyramid is Wakefield Forest Elementary, projected at a hundred and sixty-four percent projected over capacity. So what unfortunately Jeff and Kevin keep telling me is, Megan, it's a big district, and there's only so much we can do. And so I was looking in the CIP, and what I could find was what we've done up until, um, I guess it's the school year eighteen nineteen, which is obviously where we are right now. But I don't know what's going to happen after that. But what I saw in the pattern from thirteen fourteen going through is four boundary changes starting in thirteen fourteen, then two, then two, then four, then zero in seventeen eighteen, and then now three this year. With two hundred schools and the changes were happening, we'll never get to the, the things that need to happen. But meanwhile, we're either going to spend tens of millions of dollars more to increase the enrollment at Wakefield Forest that's supposed to be the optimal five hundred or so students in elementary school to maybe growing them to anywhere from eight hundred to nine hundred kids in that building on a small footprint of land, while meanwhile, two other feeders not even a mile away each are sitting there with so few students, we can't even offer the full spectrum of, of, um, opportunities at an elementary school. At Little Run, it's so tiny, they barely can have two classes per grade level. And I mean barely, their kindergarten classes, I think this year, are somewhere around, uh, twelve kids in each of the kindergarten class, maybe up to fifteen. I mean, I, I keep talking to these two, and then Jessica, when you joined the team, and you're awesome too. So none of this is directed at Jeff and Kevin. I'm, I'm begging my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand. I'm, I'm at my wits' end of how many times I'm being told in six years, get to the back of the line because, you know, you're not overcrowded in these two schools. Um, some of the boundaries just don't even make sense. We should just be cleaning them up. But whether it's administrative, boundary light, or full boundary, I can't get anything done. I will say, without my request, the former Assistant Superintendent, when he was understandably trying to address Anandale's overcrowding and Fairfax High School's overcrowding, his, his shop turned around and just overcrowded Woodson now. So Anandale is now under-enrolled. I'm not sure where Fairfax High School is, but my point being that we, we've got to find a solution here. So that's, that's the, the biggest piece when it comes to the boundaries. So Dr. Braybrand, I was going to ask, and to Mr. Plattenberg as well, could we have in the CIP a, um, Boundary Studies Project page, or pages plural, that will show what is our game plan for the next five years out? Because I can only see what we're doing up until this year. But for all of us to understand in terms of the Q, because either our colleagues are all going to get lobbied by me, Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, between now and we vote on it saying, put me to the head of the line, but that's not good governance. Good governance is the three of us and anybody else who wants a boundary study done for their areas, we bring it to the board, we bring it to the division. But I need to know before I support Ms. Strauss or Ms. Evans, where are they in the, like, mission critical? We can't ignore this because you guys have the objectivity and the ability to see macro level across two hundred schools, what has got to get addressed? But right now, I don't even have a knowledge of what our staff thinks we can't ignore anymore. I just know we got a problem.
I, I, I feel your pain, um, and, and I understand that.
Six years of pain.
Six years, I understand, I understand the concern. I think Dr. Braybrand wants to speak to that, and, and I, I, I thought there was a committee addressing some of the boundary issues and trying to come up with a comprehensive plan. So maybe that's where we need to.
Well, just to be clear, Ms. Kieske Marra, I'm with Ms. Evans because I know where Ms. Darnap Kofax says we need a macro level, look at the whole county kind of thing, boundary thing. But I got told that a couple of years back as well, and I'm with Ms. Evans. We have to do something in tandem. There are strategic boundary things that have got to be addressed now.
I, I hear you, Ms. McLaughlin. Not everybody may agree with you, so let's, let's hear what Dr. Braybrand has to say.
Jeff, you want to go first, and then I'll make some comments after.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Uh, uh, on page forty-six, the recommendations from staff, and that is our work order, our work log, our to-do list, if you will. The, uh, second item and the third item is Woodson, Wakefield Forest. Third one's Robinson, Woodson, Oakview, Old Creek. And it talks about capacity relief, spring twenty nineteen, fall twenty nineteen. So, and then the last one's Little Run. So when you look, the next one down is Little Run, and then after that is Justice. Well, that currently is staff's recommended and the proposed, adopted, proposed, board working orders for staff. So that's what we, we do plan on attending for, so for six years. Um, your point is not lost, Ms. McLaughlin, because it's, it's accurate. That's a reflection of how long it's taken to get those, that whole area to be looked at collectively as a part of our boundary process. And, and then many that were mentioned tonight, and I know it would be recommended as board action, not really on a, uh, a follow-on list that's provided up here, but at a public meeting to be added to this list, like the recommendation for McLean High School, um, like some of the other items that are being brought up, that will be adopted by the board to go on the to-do list for staff. Now, the prioritization, you know, is something that we can, we can discuss as staff in terms of our work. But to your point, Ms. McLaughlin, as I said in the commercial, it's in there. Um, but the process, the opportunity, and the scoping of the staff is, is definitely, I appreciate those comments.
No, thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, and I appreciate them showing me that chart. Again, I think, as you know, it only shows what we would try to do for next fall of nineteen, and I think there's one that's listed for twenty twenty. But I, I'm kind of envisioning more of we need a, a, a five, hopefully more of a five-year outlook so board members know where they are in the queue.
And I, and I want to do that, and that's why the February and March conversations are so important. Because what we showed you from the earlier study that we did back in the fall is our policy's very broad. We have multiple factors. We haven't prioritized, prior to, prior, prioritized factors as some other school districts have. Um, and it's something for the board to consider. I mean, one powerful factor, you could say, capacity utilization, which is where I think Mr. Moon was going. But the board has to be ready, otherwise, because of how you all, I was here too, it turns into, oh, look what the superintendent did, oh, look what the board member did. Getting the board to agree in the parameters is going to allow us to accelerate boundaries. And we need to say, and it's okay to say, you all are elected folks, and there are political pressures that come into, uh, play around boundaries. There was a lot of political pressure to make a boundary adjustment to Wakefield Forest some years ago. I was around, but guess what happens now? It, it solves something short-term, but long-term, you've now created massive overcapacity, not just at the elementary school, but at the high school. So I think the parameters that can be established in March, in February and March, can help us accelerate a set of boundary decisions that almost like the Q. You and the community can see what those look like. And you can start to direct me, which is where I think you were going earlier today, to put in place the Fairfax promise, to put in place the additional staffing concurrent with the boundary work so that folks feel that that Fairfax, um, offer of quality, of support, of equity is, is, is available as we make changes. And, and I think that's been one of the things that's been a sticking point as we've dealt with boundary issues in the past.
Um, Ms. Kieske Marra, for a next step, um, the projected boundary projects versus the existing boundary projects, they weren't next to each other. So I, I was looking to see a continuation from what we have done versus what we are doing. I would just, from administratively, I think they need to be back-to-back next to each other so the reader sees them both together and knows, has a more continuum of understanding.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hopefully, Ms., um, Mulberg got that. Um, I'm looking forward to that comprehensive discussion, um, because I think some of the piecemeal approach has led us to exactly where we are right now. Uh, I have, uh, Ms. Strauss.
Um, thank you. I guess, I mean, this question is for Ms. Corbett Sanders and Dr. Braybrand. Um, so in February, we're going to take a look at a broader approach to boundaries. Um, if we do that, are we still looking at years out to actually tackle something? Um, and I caution my colleagues, Langley High School is on its way to being the, the most under-enrolled. We've just put in a hundred million dollars in a renovation, and they're done. Um, and McLean High School and Longfellow are lobbying us for trailers and a modular. So my question is, if, on page forty-six is where we take an amendment to add something to that list of boundaries, and that devote vote is January twenty-fourth. If we wait until February, March to talk about all of this, then is it then years down the road? In my last piece, whenever we begin to address the Tyson's impact, and not the high-end expensive residential housing, but your moderately priced existing apartments that need to be shared, and it's an opportunity for a pyramid that has no apartments at all, uh, for there to be a shared, uh, demographic, economic mix. Um, it would be too bad to miss this opportunity, um, to be able to help meet what I hear from everybody else is economic diversity.
I don't think you're going to miss an opportunity, Ms. Strauss. I think what the current plan is to have two conversations. The first conversation is really what, you know, continuation of best practices and, um, a scoping of what we would want to do on a holistic or comprehensive level. Uh, and the second piece is the goal setting. What are the goals that this board feels are important when we look at boundaries? So I understand that your goal would be economic diversity within these two schools.
Plus saving money.
I, I understand because the money's already been spent at one school. Um, so it, it is resource allocation, resource optimization. I absolutely understand what you're talking about. But what I'm hoping in that goal-setting conversation will be, uh, and it was part of a conversation we started last year, which is, in the past, we've only looked at neighboring schools purely, two schools next to each other. Is that the appropriate look in, when we look at boundaries? Or if there is a contiguous of three schools or four schools, and what is the impact? So that goal-setting piece is going to be important. That goal-setting process is going to be in the near term. And based on that, we should have an understanding of where we go from here. I'm not going to presume where we go from here because that's the conversation we need to have with the board. I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, the boundary, which boundaries we're going to be looking at at any given time, it's not locked in by the CIP. The boundary, um, evaluation process can happen without it being listed in the CIP. Am I correct, Mr. Sneed? So boundary specifics aren't critical.
Okay, because that, I, all right. So you're not locking. If, if there is not support, because I might, I'm looking at page forty-six, and that appears to be the list of potential, uh, boundaries to be looked at.
Can I clarify the process? Because my understanding was I added two schools to the boundary feasibility, the bottom chart, for us to start looking at those last year. chart, for us to start looking at those last year because I have schools that are even higher capac, overcapacity than even McLean. So I guess that's maybe our own internal process. Because my understanding is because it's just not about surprising people, but because of the need to go through what we're looking at and look at future feasibility, I guess my question is, is this something that could go there?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I would like to have, I think it needs to be somewhere because the, both communities are beginning to advocate for certain things that may or may not, and I would like to have it fit into what I know is everyone's objective. So, uh, if it can be added to page forty-six, whichever chart is appropriate.
I, 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 I'm not sure that this meeting is, you, I, I, I'm thinking that that comprehensive discussion needs to happen, and I think Ms. Darnett Kofax had a question specifically related to this. Did you, did you have some clarification?
Well, no, I'm, I'm paging through this. Um, Ms. Ellis or Mr. Sneed, if you can tell me, because Ms. Strauss had stated that she felt that Langley would be the most under-enrolled, where's, where's the data on the enrollment percentages?
Sixty-five.
Page sixty-five. Okay. Thank you so much. That's all I needed, and I will look at that and answer my question.
Ms. Paltchak actually raises an important point because the verbiage under boundary feasibility is additional school board member identified areas to consider for future boundaries. It's not, you know, it's kind of our, hey, what are you thinking piece? It's not staff's recommended. And so if, if you look at it as the individual school board member recommendations, and that's where you can put that.
And that's my question. It's my understanding that to change anything at all in this book takes an amendment.
You are correct.
Okay, so that would be another way to go as somewhere on this page forty-six, something because the community is pushing hard. And I just have to be honest about that.
In the past, I've added it because it was before it was proposed, but I think what's important about that area is staff hasn't had a chance to look at it and provide possible
recommendations.
The top chart is they've already had the opportunity to look at it and do that for us, so I guess that's where I would feel more comfortable.
Well, as long as it's somewhere, because I'm meeting with both of these communities this week, and I need to say something because they're going to want money spent, and I'm going to have to say.
Ms. Strauss, may I ask staff what they're expecting from us so that we can follow the procedure?
Yeah, and you want to start?
Yes. So, um, we, we began to add this chart about three years ago, um, because sometimes you all may not want our recommended boundary change. I'm not talking about anybody specifically, I'm just talking, um, in general. So it's difficult for us to move ahead if we don't have the support of the magisterial member, okay? Um, so you all began to identify specific boundary changes, which would, uh, we, we have consensus between staff and the board member that there was something was going to be done at a particular school. Um, Jessica has already identified at every school, and we did this, I guess it was starting five years ago, we sat down with each board member and talked about, um, potential boundary changes. But here, we just have a consensus between the board member and staff. So, um, the initial step was to add in the boundary feasibility, the board member, after talking with staff, would say, well, listed here, and then with the consent of the remainder of the board, they would move it to the priority. So it was a collaborative.
So, if I may clarify, we are at the juncture where specific board members have concerns that can be taken under consideration, at which point the board members, the entire board can receive a report, and I hope make a more conscious, prop, comprehensive, have an opportunity to, to have a more comprehensive look at these issues. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we don't necessarily write a report. It's already in the CIP. If a school is overcapacity or projected to be overcap, you know, what, we list potential, um, solutions. It's already in the CIP. The difference here is that the board member, wh, after discussing this with staff, will say, I think now, eh, we need to look at a feasibility, which is the bottom chart for potential pri, move it to a priority.
So I guess what I, I didn't mean to say report. If I said that, I don't even know I said it. But, um, there's an opportunity to say, we want these issues, or a board member can present it to this board to have that as a part of the consideration.
Correct.
But we would not be making a decision because it was my understanding, the initial motion made by Ms. Strauss would have been sa, would have said, this needs to happen now, and it needs to be put at the top of the queue. What I think I hear my fellow board members saying is that we need to be able to consider that in context with everything else.
Correct. And, um, Megan already pointed out that it would be almost impossible to do five concurrent boundary changes. I mean, at least, I'm not complaining, but it would be extremely, extremely difficult for the planning staff to do that.
So, so, so if I could say, part of the discussion that I think needs to happen in February, March, I'm new, not, not new now, but two years, but in this seat around CIP, two, three. The board has to decide how the, the process that we're using, has it been working or not? That's the first judgment. The other is, is the magis, you, you're a board with nine magisterial districts and three at-large. What is the relationship of, of the three at-large to boundary issues and discussions? I believe that, you have to have that discussion. And as you bring the goal-setting, what are the factors you want staff to consider? Right now, let's just name it, it's just true, and everyone's already said it. Part of it is staff goes to the magisterial board member first to sort of get it on the docket. Some, you know, is that the way to, to continue, or do you want other factors that will drive whether it gets on the docket or not?
Well, without, without due respect, Dr. Bray Brand, I'm wondering if that discussion you're referring to in February is the more appropriate time to have those discussions?
Absolutely.
And as the meeting manager who is painstakingly trying to keep us on some sort of schedule, I would ask that we, if we could just recognize that that is the appropriate place to have that discussion, we could try to get through this particular discussion and then, um, understand that we are not just kicking the can down the road, that we understand that we are coming together as a body to govern in an appropriate manner and discuss the concerns that everyone is raising today. Okay, I see nodding heads. I'm going to take that, I'm going to just take that opening and run with it. Um, I next have Karen Corbett Sanders.
So not to throw another wrinkle in this, but there are two that we need to be looking at. One is the whole issue of split feeders. We have heard from people consistently that the split feeders have been a challenge.
So can we list that as a, as a next step?
So as a next step, I would like to have a report back from staff on those split feeders that currently feed into an overcrowded school, um, just so we know what they are. And then, um, the second piece is, uh, pre-K. We know that the governor has put more money in his budget for pre-K. We know that we have a waiting list that continues to be extensive, um, longer in one side of the county than elsewhere, because if you look at the, some of the way that we provide pre-K, it differ, differs between two sides of the county. And so if we were to build in, what would be the impact if we had pre-K, um, to satisfy the demand that we currently have?
We being the school system?
We being the school system. So if we were to add classrooms.
Yeah, we did that with kindergarten full A.K.
That's my concern, is that that had a significant.
And it ended up in trailers, but, I mean, there are many ways to approach.
So you asking that that be?
Be an impact, asking an impact analysis.
Okay.
To be done on the capacity of our buildings if we were to add a pre-K to our programming.
You know, what, this is what I see. The schools typically that have head start or fee sap are more crowded. One, they have smaller class size, so for the va, number of students, they consume more classrooms. You know, I pointed out earlier that right now, we've allocated ninety-two classrooms to either early head start or head start. These are existing spaces that we have that are not there. And we talked to the county last year and said, is there a way that you can offset the funding? I mean, we, somebody's got to pay for the space. That's the, the first challenge that you have, is we don't have sufficient capital dollars to either renovate our school, or if we have some areas of growth, and adding the, more of these is, is certainly problematic. Now, we can do the analysis and look, I mean, the question though, Jessica, is, we, I don't even know if we, we can't, can we geocode the kids that are on the waitlist?
Yes.
But we, we could do that and then see, I mean, this will take a while, okay? But we have to geocode and see what boundary they live in, and then look at that particular, uh, school.
Because I think you're going to find that that will have a significant impact and probably on some of our higher need schools.
Absolutely.
And, um, it's my understanding that this board has supported pre-K as part of our strategic plan. So if we support pre-K as part of our strategic plan, then we need to know where we're going to put them.
I, I don't disagree. I mean, it, it's going to come down, I, I'm almost certain, and we look at this all the time, is, do we have space in those facilities?
Okay.
So I appreciate that. That's a next step.
That's a next step. All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines.
Very quickly, um, and I, I hope, um, Karen, that we are, uh, still going to do the last part of our work session, which is the renewable energy report, because.
I haven't had any discussion regarding that, I'm just really trying to get through this.
Okay, so I'm assuming that we are, okay? I mean, I hope people aren't just thinking we're going to kick out because it's quarter after five, that's a really important.
Well, my concern is, I, I live in the woods.
I got you, I got you, so I'm going to be quick.
And I would prefer not to slide home.
I'm going to be quick. I'm going to be quick. I just wanted to say, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Darnett Kofax bringing up, and when we talk about our goals, bringing up socioeconomic diversity and tipping points and all of that, and when we talk about our goals for, uh, boundary studies, you know, we kind of wring our hands and talk about equity and diversity and tipping points and all of that, but I don't know, I don't know that we've ever had in socioeconomic integration as an intentional goal. And if, if we have, I'm not sure that we have served it very well, right? And so I think maybe when we talk about it, we have to have that as a goal that is equal with the other masters that we serve when we do boundary changes. Because I believe not only is that better for schools, I think it's better for the learning environment. I think we're less likely to have, um, uh, parallel school systems even within a building, you know? We're, we're more likely to have socioeconomic integration in the classroom, which is also where it should be, if we have that between our buildings. So I'm just seconding that, I guess.
And, and I, I don't know if Ms., well, Ms., she's next, I'll let her say it. Tammy?
No, go, you can say it. Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, that certainly could be listed as a, as a next step, but you have that opportunity, you're next on my list.
Well, I, I, I think that's always been a goal. I think I've talked about it at length. I think there's been white papers done internally about it. I know, um, why can't I think of his name? Um, the assistant superintendent, uh, uh, yes, I'm, no, Renato Ricardo, um, the one under Karen Garza, who used to be the former principal, uh, put region three, what, region nine? Dan Paris. Dan Paris, Dan Paris had, had done a white paper on the, the, the socioeconomic, um, impacts, and, um, I, I most certainly would, would welcome that. I, the, the bad news was, is, you know, there was, it, it, I guess the bad, look, there's good and bad news. Um, you know, tipping point studies socioeconomically, every, all of my schools should be failing, and they're not. They're not. Um, you know, so, so that's, that, that's one point. But it, but at the same time, um, there are not really any national models that I know of, at least based upon his research in the white paper right before he left, that show, you know, when you have these great areas of poverty like we do, these deep, deep pockets of poverty. And so in context with the CIP, how do you boundary it out? Do you actually use the B-word? Um, you know, all of, all of those things. That's, that was the B-word I was talking about. That was the one I was, I was saying. So, um, I don't know, B-word, you were thinking. Well, boundary, boundary is one, but, but, so, so I would absolutely have that as a next step. And just so you all know.
So just to clarify, your next step is with respect to, uh, having so, the socioeconomic factors as a?
In our conversation, factored in.
As, as a factor to be considered, you know, for the February discussion.
And if I could just give the board a brief update, we've, we've actually been doing some work on the presentation this week for February, and as we are looking at the data that we, uh, that ORC has pulled together with the review of best practices, uh, there will be some recommendations, or at least some information around, uh, demographics, around socioeconomic, around, uh, transportation and travel time, uh, and, and very clearly some recommendations and information around capacity and, uh, cost savings that, that, uh, Ms. Strauss was talking about. So, uh, the, we can, we can certainly guarantee that, that, uh, the documentation that we'll provide will be a, a very good and strong foundation for our discussion in February.
Okay. And I, I just wanted to mention, um, Ms. Corbett Sanders advocacy about pre-K, I'll wait to see what the next step is, but I do know that through the years, we have done, um, the heat maps, we kind of know, you know, the numbers change, but they, they, they don't so much. And I do think, um, because, you know, this was the issue Pat Hines and I came to the board on with the pre-K issue, I do still think we have to be real, um, until we have where we need to be K through twelve, I think we, it, it's, it's a county program that needs to come funding from them, and I, well, I am the biggest, well, you know, on par with all of you who are big proponents of that, I think we have to be real careful about saying that because I remember the cost being, back then, when I looked at it, it was about twenty-seven thousand dollars per student to bring them into the classroom, and it was, it was, yeah, it was, yeah, yes, yes. Well, it's, 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 yeah, it's about only ten thousand dollars less anyway, but tho, those were the numbers that I remember from Ms. Quinn a long time ago, um, and, uh, Kevin's shaking his head, he kind of remembers. I'm, I'm about right in the ballpark.
All right, we've got a request to cover our last topic, and Mr. Moon has something we haven't done, next steps. You, you asked to get on the list?
Yes, yes. Uh, I don't know exactly what the language that, if Mrs. Strauss goes forward with her motion will look like, uh, but depending upon what the language says, I may be inclined to support that, putting it somewhere on the CIP.
We'll probably look at putting it on page forty-six, that seems to be.
I, I want to say the exact language, but.
We'll work on it. We'll work with everybody.
As an at-large member, I'm inclined to support a badge shared to ship board members advocacy for a limited, specific school-related boundary adjustments.
All right, thanks. Okay, um, I think that's the last thing. I will speak as an at-large member. I, um, I do have some very significant concerns about the piecemeal approach that has been taken to, uh, small boundary changes. Um, I made a face when Ms. Paltchak was talking about Luther Jackson, and, and please know that that had nothing to do with you personally, it had something to do with that issue. And, um, I am very concerned about not, uh, being able to take a comprehensive view so that we don't have these unintended consequences. Um, nobody thought, a, as I've, I've talked to staff, nobody thought that these choices would be made, uh, with Luther Jackson, but that's where we are now, and we, we simply bust the problem somewhere else. Um, and so I, as one at-large member, would not be able to support what I heard earlier. Um, I think we're moving in a slightly different direction in the sense that we would be saying, we do need to have this comprehensive discussion, we do need to, you know, certainly magisterial members need to be able to raise their concerns, and we need to do that in the context, in my view, of a comprehensive discussion. Okay, having said that, um, I'm, I think we're ready for next steps.
Ms. Kiesgmar?
Yes.
Um, I just, uh, wanted to get a sense of the process. So we're going to be having next steps that relate to both the CIP as well as regarding membership enrollment. as well as regarding membership enrollment, trends and analysis.
I think that people made next steps with respect to both, I believe.
Right, so I have one that I don't think is probably captured, because we ran out of time. So I'll just offer it at the end. But my thought would be, we'll review them because of how they were offered in order, but ideally, what I'd like is if staff can then sort them into the two buckets, because I think it's going to be easier for us as we're getting, preparing to vote on the CIP. We're going to want to, you know, take the context of what we're looking for in next steps related to CIP, and then the membership trends and analysis, I think is for the upcoming work sessions we're going to have in February or March. But I'm just saying, I'm going to want a copy of this full thing, because I feel like our board did some really good work today in asking a lot of robust questions, and it's going to inform my deliberation.
That's fine. We can just submit that to Ms. Mulberg over there, and she can separate it out. Okay, number one. Lists of everybody, Mr. Moon, does that say what you needed to say? You're number one up there.
Yes.
Okay, does everybody agree with that? Okay, number two.
Yeah, it might be a big ask, so I don't know if this is necessarily something immediate. Gillis, Mr. Sneed, I don't know if there's something of short term or if this is more long-term request.
I think it would depend on what the workload is and out of the next steps. If we prioritize them, that would be helpful to staff.
Okay. Are you able to prioritize those, Ms. Palchuk?
Can I ask a quick question, Kevin, Jeff, Jessica? Do we need to, do you need a day to prioritize what the workload is associated with those? Do we even know how much workload there is? I'm just saying, as staff goes, huh?
It's pretty massive, I mean.
What I'm saying is, do you want, we could take 24 hours, 48 hours, to just come back and tell them, yep, this one we could have done in X amount of time. This is going to take. Typically, our next steps have been three weeks to follow up, and if not, you know, we say, so.
I haven't looked through all these. I know, for instance, Mr. Moon asked two questions with a lot of information. One was how many boundary changes, you know, using surplus capacity.
Right, that's number six.
Right. In my view, I would actually look at utilizing surplus capacity, calculate how many trailers would be eliminated, and then look at the trailers after that. That, the actual order would have to be reversed for me.
And I guess for mine, assuming it takes at least some amount of work, it's more for our next conversation, I think would be good to have. Not necessarily for our vote, but for the March conversation.
Okay, so are we comfortable with number two?
Yeah, I think Ms. Gillis had something to say.
I was just saying, if we have a meeting on the 25th, if that's what you're asking for, if it's prepared by the, like, the February 25th meeting for the boundaries?
Oh, we're still looking at February 25th, not March.
Well, there are two. One's in February and one's in March. It would be the same workload and the same timeline. That was my point that I was just making.
So I assume we're not making every decision then? So if there are things that can be prepared for that, that would be helpful? If there's more detailed data that, then I think as long as we're able to see that throughout that process, I guess not necessarily for the January vote, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? All right, Ms. Evans? Okay, does everybody understand?
Can I ask a quick clarifying question on this? Push for increased funding, more spending authority, is that for build? Or is that for major maintenance? Or, so can I ask if you'd be willing?
Okay, for-
Okay, so that's for the CIP and not for O and M?
Right. We would have to get the authority from the county.
So is this appropriate for this, or do we need this as part of a budget amendment?
I think it would be a CIP amendment, or probably a follow-on motion.
I think it's a follow-on motion. It doesn't, I'm not sure it belongs here, because it belongs as a follow-on motion.
Right.
Right, okay.
That's fine.
Okay, so you'll work on that, Ms.? Okay, all right, number four. I'm not sure who this, yeah, I have no way to access county data. Oh, I thought she was saying she was going to work on that as a follow-on motion. Did I misunderstand?
No, that was the one she just took off.
It was the pre-
Oh, okay.
What was number four, which is now number three?
This is a longer-term issue. That we need a longer-term method by which, and I said, before we do another renovation queue, we need to, we need to find a way to compare our renovation cycle with the counties, because we're, one of the reasons that we're limited is for that.
So can I offer a suggestion that we, as part of our joint discussion with the county on capital improvement, discuss the various approaches to renovations, approaches and timeframes for renovations by the county versus the schools, and make recommendations for parity?
I think it can be a little simpler than that, because my planning commissioner, Braddock, told me that she knew exactly what the renovation queue and timeline has been for county buildings being renovated, and she was actually proposing that they put a freeze on county renovations, because schools were so much more backlog than counties were. She said, we're renovating our county buildings faster and more timely than we are at schools. And that was going to be her advocacy. So I'm just saying, I think they do have a list that says, here's where we are in our renovation queue. Here's how long it's been since those buildings were done. So I think we should just be asking the county to turn over their renovation queue data.
Well, I think that, going back to Ms. Corbett Sanders's idea, we could have this be part of our conversation with the county as to how we can compare our queue with theirs, because currently, we can't. In terms of age, condition, we have a lot of, a lot of different things went into the creation of the renovation queue. And they have a different one. They have, what, an A, B, C, D approach? When we did the infrastructure financing committee, we couldn't compare the two. We just couldn't compare the two. So I think you may be on the right track in terms of, and Ms. McLaughlin, I hear you. They can tell you that this building is only, you know, 20 years old, versus we can say ours is 40 years old.
But Ms. Evans, they do have a renovation queue. They can report all of that, and we can do a crosswalk on-
But that would be included in what she's saying.
Okay.
So let's have it be part of the joint conversation with the county the next time we meet with them on this issue.
Okay.
Let's, I would like to record it as a next step, though.
Okay, are you?
Right. Next, yeah, conversation with county, discuss coming up with, yeah, discuss developing a method of, of-
I mean, Ms. Evans?
Comparing, comparing, yeah, a method of comparing. How about that? Is that okay?
I mean, we've discussed joint work on the CIPs as we've done with the budget, so I don't, right.
Right, okay.
So trying to align our CIP process, I don't-
Oh, and to, okay, to seek parity, to seek parity. How about that?
Yeah.
How about that?
That's a good way of putting it. Thank you for the word parity.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? All right, number four. The only question I had that I didn't, I don't think I had an opportunity to ask when I made this, is whether our calculations include by right development? It doesn't, or does?
For the non-exempt areas, it does include, it's just the net. It includes by right, and for the exempt areas, which are those development areas, it does not. We do not do a net. There's nothing in the legislation, the former legislation, which the exempt areas apply to. We don't have to include the by right.
Well, I mean, in terms of what contributions the school system needs, that development, whether it's in an exempt area or not, impacts our schools. And so I'm suggesting that that needs to be included in that analysis right there. Okay, just, yeah, I just want to make sure that that reference to by right development is included.
Would this be a work session?
Um, yes. This is something we're coming back to discuss, to make sure that we all understand, and then we can come forward, we can come into an agreement as to how we want to use that information.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I want you to just fix, no, I was kidding. Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, number five. Yeah, that's you.
Can I ask you a question? Is it 85%, under 85% today? Or is it the 20 to 23, 85% based on projections of what's coming through the system?
Oh, 23, 25, 24, yeah.
So, Mr. Moon, I think, as I said, I'm going to, I think the best thing for me to do is-
You take a look at the trailers first.
Right, well, I have to look, because if I have schools that are under, that I think, even if we can move 50 kids out, which would eliminate the trailers, then, you know, because what I'm afraid of is if we just look at the trailers and I do the capacity separate as two components, I think I have to somehow-
I'm just looking for staff's best thinking.
I got it.
Best advice to us, so that when we go to meet with the county supervisor on February 26, I have all the information at our disposal.
And so my plan was this way, because you've asked for specific schools by year. If I, if I think that we can eliminate trailers, either through the capital program or through some large boundaries, and then get to the actual number. I mean, this is, I hear this all the time from four to six-
Because our chance of having that discussion with the supervisors is so rare that maybe once a year, once every two years, that I don't want to miss this opportunity to make the advocacy, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to be in a position where if they raise questions, I'll be unable to answer. Or if they say that whether you look at through these, I don't want to say that we have not studied those yet. So ended up postponing that discussion to a future time, which might not take place.
Right, I just want to make sure you knew what I was going to compile for you.
And is it trailers and modulators, or just trailers? Because the modulators are frankly exchangeable in the minds of our community.
I mean, if, I mean, it's a workload issue on the part of staff. If you could provide us with, the more the information you provide, the better position we all will be at the joint meeting.
Right, and you know, my concern with throwing the modulators in there is that those are capital-funded. These are finance units as opposed to the, and so I'm a little afraid that the BOs-
It's a way that, you know, I'd be happy with the trailers first.
Right. Okay, is everyone-
Can we do modulators over 20 years old, since they've already been amortized? What's our amortization of our modulators?
The 20 is correct.
So why not modulators over 20 years old?
Fortunately, Ms. Evans already identified the one that, that would be 99, right?
I think I've got a couple, too.
Ah, okay.
Keep replacing the floors, and I'm very appreciative of it.
Yeah, we do our best, okay. Okay, all right, are we comfortable with number five?
Kevin, can I just be sure, Jeff, do you know what to do? Because I'm, I am not the subject matter expert, and I'm not sure what you would do. Do you know what to do? If you know what to do, and you're good, and he's good, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like he's good. Everybody good with number five? Okay, all right, number six, Ms. Palchuk.
Yeah, if this is readily available, I would like to have that information. Please let me know if you need additional time for that. Thank you.
If there are any issues with any of these, as we were talking about rating projects, we'll let you know.
Yeah, and if they're, if region, if you're able to give more accuracy, like regionally or beyond that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, is everyone comfortable with number six? All right, number seven.
I would like that to break down of net migration in and, well, I guess in and out. I mean, yes, and I would like it broken down by race and ethnicity as well, the same charts that you use. Thank you.
Okay, is everyone, let her finish that. Is everyone comfortable with number seven? Okay, number eight.
What was the tipping point study?
I think that perhaps to say, to review the tipping point study, which-
Sure, I don't, those weren't my exact words, yeah.
We can certainly do that, and have actually started to do some of that work in preparation for February.
Thank you.
Okay, are you comfortable, Ms. Renat Kofax? Is everyone else comfortable? Okay, number nine, Ms. McLaughlin. All right, is everyone else comfortable?
Except for that I had also said that if we can have the projected boundary projects extended to a five-year outlook versus just it's the one. Thanks. Yep.
Okay, all right, is everyone comfortable with that?
I'm a little concerned with that because of the work that we're doing on goal setting. And so as long as that is asterisked, that this is, you know, could be the projected based on the current situation, but as the board changes, you know, the board sets its goals, it could be different.
And that's why I like it's an annual review of a five-year projection. So there's some kind of annotation on that.
But you still set expectations in the community, so we want to make sure that we balance them.
Okay, is Ms. McLaughlin, you're comfortable with that? How about everybody else? Okay, all right, number 10, Ms. Evans?
Yeah, that's, it's an administrative thing.
Okay. Okay, all right, is everyone else comfortable with that? All right, and number 11, Corbett Sanders, is that okay? All right, did you have a comment?
Well, I have a comment, which of course relates to that, but we talked a great deal, and I don't think I saw it reflected in there, but maybe it's already slated for when we are going to have. Is that in the February meeting, where we're going to have the talk specifically about what criteria we use for boundaries? That's in that February 25th meeting?
It's the February and March meetings. We've got one February 25th, which is the best practices, digging deeper into it, and then we will do the goal setting at the next meeting.
Thank you. So, because some, there's pieces of what's going to be happening in that conversation, but we did have the totality of the conversation listed there. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that was, we've had so many conversations today, that that was the point of the February 25th, and now you're saying March meetings. Thank you.
If I could clarify for number 11, and this is where there are the multiple priorities. This is what we were trying to fix with the Luther Jackson change, right? There, we had an overcrowded school, and we had kids leaving their pyramid. So for me, I guess, I want to know if we can get, that's one of the criteria, right, that we're looking at, but to be able to get the other criteria that we're going to be prioritizing, considering as we have that conversation.
Correct. That is just to have the data to actually understand. I think the data- I, I think the data is actually there, I would just have to pull it from multiple charts. So, if staff could do that, it would be easier.
So, I guess, making sure we have the socioeconomic data next to it and all of that in context. I just, I think this is where it's difficult, is we haven't been clear about our priorities. And so, when we've been given information to make those decisions, you know, it, it's been missing other data and other critical data. That's, I just want to caution us on that, because it's critical, but there are other factors.
Correct.
Okay, so, but with, I understand your concern, but with respect to this specific language, is everyone okay? Uh, is there another page or is that it?
Uh, Ms. Keys-Gamar, I had, oh.
Okay, number twelve.
And I had another one when you're done.
Okay, uh, Ms. Corbin Sanders, is this saying what you needed to say?
That is correct. And then, there was one more I had as well.
Okay.
Which was, what would be the impact if thirty-seven percent of our middle school students are currently moving into another, um, middle school based on AAP? What would happen if we actually had that AAP at each middle school at this point? Do we have enough, you know, what would be the numbers and, yeah.
If all the students were, stayed in their base middle school, would we have sufficient seats for them?
Correct, and would we have a sufficient cohort for them to-
A critical mass needed for programs.
To have that program.
Right.
We have to decide what critical mass is, yes.
Well, experts have that data there.
Um, for number twelve, can-
Hold on, okay.
Yeah, the critical mass part is really something instructional services.
I'm not sure we approved twelve and then we wrote thirteen, so, let's make sure we're okay with twelve.
So, I have a question at twelve, because I, um, when we talk about capacity, Mr. Plattenberg, this will include places like Grand Road Community Building that we own that currently aren't a specific school. I guess, where are we looking for a capacity?
That's fine, we're gonna have to get back to you on what, what's involved in that. That's a deep question, it's a good one, but-
All right, is everybody comfortable with number twelve? All right, number thirteen? Is that something staff feels that they can answer?
Well, there's a part of it, the, that really is instructional services, I believe, in number thirteen.
Okay.
And because the critical mass for that, um, I think, I think they'd have to be a part with us, I'm sorry, Dr. Plattenberg. Well, Jeff, let's just, we'll just go back and work with Sloan on it. I mean, we're, we're, we're fine doing the review and we'll tell you whatever comes out of the review.
All right, if, having said that, is everyone else comfortable with thirteen? Okay, all right, Megan, I think you said you had fourteen?
Yeah, I had a next step, because we didn't get to talk about it, but it deals with the, um, our membership trends and analysis. And I know the board's been copied by the ACLU People Power Fairfax about concerns related to, um, the net drop in Hispanic enrollment of students, particularly in this year. And, um, I have sent some, uh, emails to the board and Scott and everybody about a Stanford research study, but the bottom line is that I think we have to be mindful, and I don't feel that we got here yet in today's analysis, on what drove such a dramatic drop. And as we know, in the hundred and ninety thousand students, you can look at this number and go, but I think if you look more closely at where the drop was, and Ms. Darnett Kofax, you kind of had talked about this in a number of conversations with board members, you saw a dramatic decline in certain schools. So, I guess, my next step request is, I would like a deeper analysis of, you know, where within the division, we saw this was a net decrease of sixteen percent of Hispanic students.
One second, one second. Okay. Because you just reminded me of something that I did say that wasn't up there. Um, so, you want to look at where these things happened, where the, this phenomena occurred. And I think I asked earlier, just briefly, if we could explore some of the reasons why.
That is exactly where, like, mine's a part A, part B question. It's not just that we, we do a deeper dive to say, among our two hundred schools, even though across the division, we saw a sixteen percent net decrease in Hispanic students. Um, what happened?
Yes, she, I don't know if you were in the room, but, um, is it Ms. Gilz, I'm sorry? Ms. Gilz said that some of it was, she gave us some of those reasons. I don't know how much of that is, I'm not, I'm asking her to give us something in writing, but the question was asked, so if, if we can include those two together. And Ms. Darnett Kofax, did you have-
Well, that was part of the reason I asked that question on Lee.
Okay.
Lee Pyramid, because I know a significant number of them.
Sure, but I think that we need to look at it as a division, because both Ms. Heinz and Ms. Strauss, I believe, share Herndon High School. And so, you guys probably have seen some of that. I just think that, you know, there's probably going to be some in Mason too.
There's, there's all over.
We need to, but it is in certain areas within the county.
And that question was asked, that was the reason I was trying to piggyback your conversation, because I forgot I had asked that. So, you're wanting to know where it happened and, and I was asking and we're both asking.
So, that doesn't cover it there, because it's analyze the, analyze the specific schools where there was a, a notable drop? I mean, I don't know how much I have to-
Schools that experienced a drop in-
Sizable drop?
In Hispanic, uh-
Experienced a sizable drop and-
And, and then, I like what Ms. Keys-Gamar said, that to the extent, uh, that we can try to explain, uh, some of the reasons, because there, there's a lot of information that we don't have with regard to why students and families have left the system.
Oh, I completely understand, it's just that, uh, I, I think we all just recognize and appreciate that if the, if we have community advocates who come to us and give us data and say, "You've got some scary data going on in Fairfax County, not just the schools." And we go, "I don't know," that, we get, you know.
I think we're asking the question and that's good.
So, that's why I think it's, it's a good thing to do, because it's interesting when you look at some of the-
And, and we can provide the information that we do have regarding why students have left.
And then, that way, we're trying to, I, I-
Could be one-off or it could end up be trending in a way that we've, we've got to better understand it.
Well, my concern is that it, the way that some of the ques, the questions could raise alarm in the community, and if we have some answers, we could head some of that off. So, is everyone, um, comfortable with the language of fourteen? Okay, um, I think we got through all of our next-
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure it was captured, I'm not sure if it did. Ms. Dahlia Palchuk and I both had asked that in the report, it had said that, um, Fair, it was on slide number five, on the five-year projection data, that one of the, the second bullet says, um, housing growth remains high, but primarily multifamily, which yields small amounts of students. I mean, that is in direct contrast to what we've been seeing, so-
So, I think, I'm, I could be wrong, but if you go back up to, I think, number four.
Number four?
Okay, well, that's fine, we can do number six. Do you want to add something to number six?
If, okay, yeah, I mean, I, that's fine, it's, it's not, yeah, explanation analysis. I, I, I want to make sure that we capture the whole thing about the proffer formula versus, maybe adding the proffer formula versus the internal FCPS enrollment-
And that's the reason why number four is there, so we can get a full explanation. But if you wanted to add additional, I don't know.
Okay, I think what it's, is maybe we just clarify number four. It's, remember how we're using formula versus proffer and I think it's causing confusion?
No, I think it's, it's clear to me.
I know it's clear to you, what I'm saying is, if, if we just put in front of the formula, FCPS internal formula, because we have our internal formula and then we have the proffer formula.
Yeah, but this is an explanation of all of it and how it all fits together.
Yeah, I just, I only wanted to put the defining adjective up there.
Okay.
So, so, just in front of formula, Ms. Mollberg, and just in front of the word formula, number four, where it says the proffer process. And then, we need to say FCPS internal student enrollment formula, correct?
Yeah, but there's more, okay, there's more than one, but that, hopefully, that's clear.
And it, it's, it's, it's a pro-
It should be a comma after that word. A comma, no, right where your cursor is, put a com, yeah. Formula, student, FCPS student enrollment, and then, there's a county formula as well.
A county formula.
There's a county formula that, that, that's why I was saying that this is going to be an explanation of the whole-
So, it shouldn't, you shouldn't have a comma between enrollment and formula.
Yeah, well, there's more than one.
It's FCPS student enrollment formula, and then, you can do a comma and you can say the county formula, but-
Well, that's what I was doing.
Oh, okay, that wasn't what she had up there, so it's just, there we go. I think that's what you're talking about, Ms. Keys-Gamar.
I, I think it's great, I think they understand and I think that's the point.
Yeah, but you know what, here's the thing, I totally appreciate that, but look at everything we end up doing with this. We come back to it and everybody goes, "What was that that we were talking about?" I just, clarity upfront, I think, is helpful, that's all. So, and then, just to, Ms. Palchuk's on number six. So, in particular, I am still very concerned that we have language in a PowerPoint, Dr. Bravran, that's saying, primary, multifamily housing, which yields small amounts of students. That doesn't bear out, right?
Well, that's why she's asking for an explanation and an analysis.
Yeah, I understand that, but in the meantime-
Countywide, that is accurate, countywide is accurate.
It's specific regions, and so, that's why Dahlia's, and Ms. Palchuk's asked for more clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, it's just, I mean, I appreciate that, but every time I stop in front of multifamily units, whether it's over near the government center, near Vienna Metro, large, large, large number of students are piling on to fill an entire bus. So, this notion that multifamily units aren't producing kids, I, I'm trying to just figure out the genesis of-
Right, I, I think, I, I think we get, we, we get that. Okay, so, I think we're done with this particular-
Nope, I had another one.
That's right, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sandy.
Uh, it's a small one, uh, to add, the Wilston site on, uh, page one thirty-four is a potential school site. Let's just record it.
Bravo, Sandy.
Thank you.
Justin, verify, okay, are, going once, going twice, no, is everybody, is it all up there? Okay, all right, so, we're going to, um, I will confer with Madam Chair. I am going to have to, just based on where I have to go, I'm sorry, I'm gonna excuse my- No, there's another topic, but, um-
I do think we have the last piece, which is the renewable energy piece. Um, can I get a general understanding of how long you think that will take?
The two hours. Um, if I could, though, this is something we asked for back in May. We have, and we were expecting it in the fall and we got it two days ago. We have two very hard deadlines coming up. One is that we're voting on the CIP next week. And the other is that the county is putting together their RFP for solar power purchase agreement right now. And it is supposed to be, uh, put out sometime this month. So, and I, I'm bringing a, um, an amendment next week, a follow-on motion and an amendment. I want to bring an amendment to add, um, solar PPA projects into the CIP and to have them in the RFP with the county as well. So, we are, we're just, we're up against a real deadline on this. I, I promise, I, the, the next steps that I was going to talk about tonight, I have put into a follow-on motion, so that we don't have to talk about that tonight. I ha, I just wanted to ask, I wanted to talk about one thing. So, if people have the patience to sit through that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, can I ask people to hold with us until ten after six and then, we will all go? Does that work for people, if we stay until ten after six? Six fifteen? Can I ask for the patience of my colleagues at six fifteen?
Why don't we start with Pat's issues first and then, we can go back into the report?
And we'll do a har, a hard stop at six fifteen.
The only request I'd have is, I don't want to do short shrift to this, so, can we just attach this to one of other works, evening work sessions coming up? Okay, yeah, let's just go with Pat's timely matter.
Right, thank you very much, and Jeff, thank you for the renewables report. Um, I, uh, there's a lot of good information in here on most of it. It's more than we asked for, more than I expected, and it's great background. Um, and I see Justin is here as well, thank you, because I know you had something to do with it. Um, there's one piece, though, that I think the renewable report is not responsive on, and that is, um, our request back in May asked for, um, uh, asked you guys to list FCPS facilities, projects, new construction and/or renovations in the CIP that include planning for renewable energy, and there aren't any of them in there. Um, and so, the reason that having some, even if it's just three to five projects in the CIP this time around, this time, is really important. And why we're up against a, a hard deadline here is because, um, the Fairfax County requests for proposals, and this is in your PowerPoint, um, if you look at slide nine, um, you have the dates for the Fairfax County's, uh, RFP. I believe those dates have changed. And my last update on those dates is that the RFP Committee, the County RFP Committee, is meeting this Friday. So, the dates have slipped some, and my understanding too, is that the county is going to release a draft to the community for comment, that's the last I heard. But, um, I, right now, I'm not sure that we have the date of exactly when the RFP will be published, because I don't think it's possible for it to be published on January eighteen, um, when that is Friday and the RFP Committee is meeting then. So, I guess I'd like any, any information, this is one question that you might have, Jeff, about the schedule for the RFP. But the bottom line is, it's coming out, you know, the, the idea is for it to come out this month, right? Um, and so, the reason why it's really important for Fairfax County Public Schools to have a few projects in that initial RFP is because, um, we have a couple of, of barriers, we have a couple of caps that we're working with at the state level. And, uh, in order for this RFP to be attractive to potential vendors and to be, to have an attractive price, we need to take advantage and we need to be in, ahead of some of these, um, these tipping points that are going to start happening. One is, there's the, thanks to our General Assembly and Dominion Power, we have a fifty megawatt cap statewide on solar projects. And that's public, private, residential, commercial, all of it, and we're already at thirteen megawatts. Um, and developers, uh, I'm sorry, vendors are very interested in, uh, getting projects going right now, particularly because prices are getting better. So, we're, we, and I, it's, even though there is legislation in Richmond now to, um, to raise that fifty megawatt cap, it's, in this current environment in Richmond, it's not likely to happen this year. The other limit that we're working with from a regulatory limit is the one percent net metering limit. And I don't want to spend too much time describing that, but it's basically, net metering is kind of like saving what you produce in terms of solar energy, kind of being able to bank it with Dominion, and you only have a one percent limit. Um, and that again, once, you know, once you start to hit that limit, vendors are not going to be that interested in taking contracts. And then, there's the federal tax benefit, which shrinks significantly at the end of two thousand and nineteen. So, there are those reasons why it's very important for us to get a few projects in the county RFP this time around. And it's my understanding that the county folks were thinking that we would be putting a few projects in there this time. Um, so, in all the feasibility conversations, and I appreciate that in the PowerPoint you list, um, I think it's slide, uh, eight, uh, you list the feasibility conversations that you have had, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Um, we've talked to the vendors, we've had them look at our schools. I, we should be able to identify three to five projects that will give us significant power from solar in a system of over two hundred buildings as a modest solar pilot that we can do now to take advantage of the county's RFP this year. So, that is the amendment that I will be developing and Ryan has offered to help, to the CIP, to try to name those projects, three to five projects, as a pilot that will be in the CIP now, described in the CIP now. Um, and then, a follow-on motion that would direct staff to put those projects in the county's RFP. I know this is a short turnaround and I want you to be able to respond to that. Um, but I, at least it's been my feeling since we brought this out in May and in, you know, conversations I've had in, in the meantime, that we, we would be able to do this. Um, some of the reasons that I've heard, and again, I'm trying to get this all out at once, because we're in a time crunch. Some of the arguments I've heard against, I have, you know, they have to do with the roofs, and I get that, but that is a common problem, other people have the same problem. Vendors have developed contractual solutions, having to do with warranties and all that. There is a way, there's a contractual way around that. And also, you know, the, the cost, to me, that's a part of the feasibility analysis and it's for the school board to make the call about priorities. Um, so, uh, Mr. Plattenberg, if you'd like to respond to any of that, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Well, no, that's fine. I wanted to just ask a question, if I can, and then I, I, she asked for 10 minutes, okay. But my question was, are you asking us to identify specific schools, or are you asking?
Yes, and here's why, yes.
Well, let me just, I appreciate your passion, Ms. Hines. But I, I will just state that I would be more comfortable having staff help us to identify those, because I have had that, had that, well, not lengthy, but some discussion with staff. And I do know that depending on the age of the, of the, of the roof, and, and the feasibility of that particular building, I'm concerned about us, you know, saying, throwing out something.
Absolutely, yeah, no, staff has, that's why, they, that's why, as I mentioned, we've done all this feasibility studies and conversations with vendors. I, I would absolutely, we want staff to, to name those schools. We need specific schools named, though, in the RFP with the county. I asked that question of the county, and we can't just say, you know, five schools to be named later. There have to be specific projects in the RFP.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Ms. Hines, thank you for bringing this up, and the rest of the body. Thank you so much for your willingness to stay longer, to go ahead and cover this really important issue. It is true, we have been working with the county. It is true, the county wanted us to name schools. It is true that we told them, we'd like to have as many schools as we could. We don't want to name any, because of what exactly Ms. Kies-Gamora mentioned about the age of the roof, the structural ability, the engineering that has to be done beyond just the identification, okay? That being said, we have three facilities that I could give you to accommodate this, and we can all go home, hopefully safely, because out of the number of schools, the process that we went through, was we looked at, what are our most recent roofs that we have? And we came up with a list of about a larger percentage than what the, this groups came in and looked at. And we found through their analysis, due to a myriad of reasons, location, proximity facing the sun, canopy, tree cavity, actual number of space to do, all the things you know. But I say that for the public. All of those things, they came back with three that were the most viable. We'd be happy to put those three that are most viable into the county for the RFP, with the understanding that in the event that the engineering does not substantiate nor support the opportunity that we think we might have with those three, that we'll be looking for others to supplement as well. Now, those three are Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Chantilly, and Masoncrest. Those three schools are our most recent, and they're the ones that, the latest vendor that came in, I won't say the vendor's name, because they're currently successful with some other jurisdictions, came in, and they were the ones that they showed as the most optimistic possibility for generating power. I will tell you, my friends in Arlington County talk about how they've done the calculation for the amount of generated power, renewable, and they still have to supplement with a paying portion of what it won't get from their calculations. So there are a lot of engineering analysis elements that need to be done, but for the purposes of Ms. Hines' request, and in the essence of the board's time, that, that is what staff could suggest to immediately solve the, the issue, or address it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, very much, because I had a feeling that we were probably close enough to do that. So I really appreciate it, and all the time that you all have spent talking about this, you know, over the last year with me. I really appreciate it. So if I could work with you on drafting that amendment to get it in there, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Excellent. With that, can I offer a suggestion? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Strauss?
I was just going to, to add on to Ms. Hines, and to say thank you to staff. And I think this is a great win-win, and you had mentioned these three schools before, so this is not totally new. And thank you very, very much. I think this is a pilot effort to be applauded. Great work.
With that, I am going to suggest that we call an end to this meeting and schedule this immediately before our budget work session on the, currently, we've got it scheduled to start at 6:00, but maybe we can start that work session at 5:00, and we'll handle this, as well as the discussion on governance. I will ask you, Jeff, I note that the recommendations don't include any place over in my neck of the woods, and we are doing renovations and enhancements to buildings, and given the environmental advocacy in the Mount Vernon District in particular, I would urge you to take a look and find a place to trial it there as well.
Thank you. We're hoping for this PPA to give us the opportunity to look division-wide. That's the difference between what Arlington had done, tying it to specific projects, and then the five individual projects. And, and unfortunately, we couldn't ride that. So we're really optimistic about what, the, what the work. Justin Moss, who's my energy coordinator, is just an amazing individual, and the work he's done with the county staff. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So I, I heard everything that Mr. Plattenberg was saying, if it turns out these three schools, something comes up with the engineering study. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, do we have three more as backups or alternates? Or is it just like, here's our shot at it, if those threes don't work, we missed the gamut, because we had to name three? Because why not name six then and say?
Because I don't, I don't have a Ms. McLaughlin, but to be honest, I said that I would supplement them with others. So that's my work in the meantime.
If you supplement, then they're the backups, the alternates?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would still fulfill the RFP?
These would be the three schools for the, for the costing of the proposal.
Okay.
With, there's language that could be in that. Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, that's, and, and is there a reason we're only going for three versus six?
All of the analysis that we had, based upon all the new schools that I mentioned, the new roofs that had been done.
Okay.
That was the analysis. We had outside entities, three different vendors come in and take a look, and they were the ones who came back and said, you know, this really doesn't show where we could be collectively have the advantageous opportunity. So that's the reason why we ended up down to 10, and then down to three.
Out of 200 buildings?
Exactly. So we, we still have work to do.
Okay.
And that's why the purpose of the PPA in renewable, and I keep, I keep cautioning, our intention is to look division-wide, once the PPA is in place, to see what is advantageous, what are the pros and cons, and report back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, before we leave tonight, I want to remind everybody that we do not have custodial staff in the building today, and so if I could ask everybody to do their own policing, I'd appreciate it.